Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we begin, we'd like to ask the Little League team to start us off in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you don't mind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Thank you, guys. Can we all remain standing for a moment?
This time, we could just have a moment of silence for East Providence firefighter Craig Bresley, whom we have lost, and also former clerk of the East Providence City Hall canvassing authority Sheila Stringfellow, who passed a couple weeks ago. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we start off with a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Here.
Councilman Morado.
Here.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
And Council President Britto.
Here.
Mr. President, may I move to seal the minutes from executive session?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor to seal the minute from the executive session. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. First item?
First item is approval of the consent calendar for vote.
Does anyone have any questions? We got a consent calendar.
Make a motion to table for further information on Section A.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is licenses not requiring public hearing for the vote.
Excuse me, we're gonna go to the citations first.
Oh, okay. Next is citations. The 2019 Riverside Little League Minor Champion All-Stars presented by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. President. This time, it gives us a lot of pleasure to congratulate the nine-ten-year-old group of the Riverside Little League, who for the third consecutive year has won the annual Ron Silver Memorial Tournament, for those who don't know. It's a pretty big tournament, with teams from Newport through Pawtucket, and it honors a former Riverside Little League volunteer, Mr. Ron Silver. And, Mr. President, I'm sorry to say, it's been Riverside and Rumford for the past three years, and, you know...
We're not, Bob.
And Central Little League, to my right, has been in the tournament too, but Riverside has come through for the third consecutive year as champions, and we promised the team we would bring them in here and present a citation. So at this time, Councilman Morado, who is the Riverside councilperson, will come forward with certificates, and I will call the names of the players. So as you are called, young men, just come on up to Councilman Morado, and after he hands your certificate, stay here so you can probably have a group picture. Basically, if I was correct, this is in alphabetical order, no other order. So as I call your name, and if you would hold your applause until all of the players come up, so we can save a little time. First of all, Alex Enright, come on up. Jose Figueroa. Jake Helene. KJ Leveque. Gavin Quinn. My favorite player, Jonathan J.J. Renaud. Owen Richards, I like all you guys, you know that. Drake Silver. Jacob Souza. And the W's are always pretty last in the group, so last but not least, John Root. The coaches. The successful manager of the team, he keeps to Coach Cahoon's chagrin, he keeps winning. And a manager, if he would come forward, Mr. Vin Enright. Also coaching, Mr. Chris Helene. Coaching Jody Richards. And coaching Mike Sabarin. Many of these players also played for other teams, and they won several tournaments this year. They really are a successful group, so a big hand for the Riverside nine-ten All-Stars.
What? What's that? Thank you. Great coach. Good job, Coach. Vince, good job. Congratulations, Mike. Madam Clerk, we may proceed to the next item.
The next item on citations is to honor Caesar Sam Montero, presented by Council President Britto.
Okay. I'll approach the podium on this. Mr. Montero is not here this evening, however, I'd like to read the citation. And I'll try to go through this quickly enough so we can proceed through the agenda. State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantation, City of East Providence Citation. Whereas Caesar Sam Montero was born in 1926 in the Fox Point neighborhood of Providence, Rhode Island. And whereas Sam Montero enlisted with the United States Army in 1944 and served valiantly in the 124 Cavalry at federalized Texas National Guard unit. And whereas Sam Montero became a member of the 5332 Brigade, also known as the infamous Mars Task Force. And whereas Sam Montero was awarded the Bronze Stars for Valor Combat Infantry Badge, Asia-Pacific Campaign Medal, Marksmanship with a Rifle Badge, and four Battle Stars for his serving country in World War II. And whereas, even after his service with the United States Army, Sam Montero continued to serve his community and raise his family in East Providence, and worked 35 years at the Imperial Knife Company. And whereas Sam Montero and his family continue to be active in the Cape Verdean community and beyond. And whereas in the City of East Providence owes a heartfelt thank you and a profound gratitude to Sam Montero for his lifetime dedication and service. Now therefore, I, Robert Britto, on behalf of the entire City Council, am honored to offer this citation in sincere thank you for a lifetime public service to Saint Caesar Sam Montero. And again, unfortunately, Sam could not be here this evening. I will present this to him, I will present this to him at the time I see him next at his facility. Madam, before we proceed, do we have any department heads that need to discuss any ordinance resolutions, any ordinance at this point in time? No? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is licenses not requiring public hearing for vote. First is application for a HAWKER license. This is for Roxanne Gomes.
Is Ms. Gomes here? Want to please step up to the podium? This was on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken, in the last meeting, and we needed some additional info or any information.
Yes, that's correct.
Madam Clerk, I know there were some questions and concern we had about the license that the applicant was seeking during the last council, however, unfortunately, you weren't here to describe and let us know as a council what exactly what your intent was going forward. So if you could just give us a brief description.
I make my own jewelry, and I want to sell it like at flea markets and bazaars and other places that I can.
Okay. And did you have a specific location that you were...
No, different locations. Different locations. Like, I did one last week in Providence, South Water Street, and before that was at Crescent Park in East Providence, like different places I'd look online to try to sell my jewelry.
Okay. All right. At the pleasure of the council, does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time? And just want to make sure that all the paperwork is in place.
All paperwork is in place.
Okay.
Yes.
Council have any questions?
No, Mr. President, move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you, ma'am, you're all set.
Okay, I can go?
Yes, you can. Unless you want to stay. You can stay. You're more than welcome. Next item, please.
Next is application for a special event, alcoholic beverage Class F1. Name of applicant is Kate Turin. The date of the event is September 28, 2019. The event is saddlebags for soldiers, and the location is at the Bright Ridge Club.
Is the applicant present at this time? Would you like to step up to the podium? We have her on the docket for two items here.
Yes, that's correct.
So can we take care of both of them at this point in time, as opposed to calling her back up? Okay.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good evening, good, how are you? Does she have all her paperwork in place?
Yes, all of her paperwork is in place.
Okay. Can you just give us a brief description of what you're looking to accomplish?
Sure. Saddlebags for Soldiers is a nonprofit, whereas we collect supplies that, along with the Attorney General's Office in Rhode Island, sends over part of Operation Holiday Cheer. So what we do is we collect the supplies that they are looking for as part of the group of donators. We do this in memory of a wonderful woman named Carol Ramandi, whose last wish was that her last hospice wish was to send out these boxes, and after she passed away, her wish was that it would continue. So what we do is we focus on veterans. The two food trucks that are there are veteran-owned. One of the vans that is there is veterans. We will have nonprofit organizations there who are part of the veterans, as well as the U.S. Vets MC, who helped me out greatly in that.
Well, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to add, I mean, these look like fairly easy items to come by, but you'd be amazed at how hard these are to come by when you're deployed, and how much, you know, deployed members appreciate the stuff, so...
That's coming from a veteran himself here.
Not a deployed veteran, ever.
Not a deployed veteran.
I knew a bunch.
Okay.
Mr. President, very noble effort here, and I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Councilman Rodrick?
Second.
We have...
Two and three.
For both.
Both licenses.
Both requests for license.
So we have a motion by Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, I hope to see you there on the...
Sure. Next item, please.
Next item is application for license to solicit. One-year Christopher Cottrell with Trinity Solar.
Is the applicant present at this time? Please step up to the podium, sir.
Good afternoon. Oh, good evening, my apologies.
Good evening, good afternoon. At the pleasure of the council, does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time? Before I give him... Okay.
So you're gonna be doing solicitation for solar energy door-to-door, correct?
Correct.
Is there a timeframe, and is there... Are you gonna be submitting names of the people who are gonna be doing the door-knocking?
As far as I'm aware, it's just me. I'm not in control of whoever else knocks.
Okay, so you're not a company who have numerous, like, people working under you who are gonna be...
I work under myself.
Just you?
Well, we have an office, but as far as I'm aware, I'm the only one working this area.
For the clerk, is there anything in the ordinance on the solicitation that requires any special permits or anything?
I'm actually gonna yield that one to Mike Marcello, our solicitor.
I'm sorry, Councilman, what was that question?
Does anything in the ordinance that requires any special permits or anything that we're overseeing at the moment? I know the solicitation conversation has come up in the past, so...
No, the application requires, I don't know, 8-118, sorry. 8-118 requires the first list of name and description of the applicant, home address, name of the company he works for, and they're not allowed to solicit any time before the hour of 8:00 a.m. or one-half hour after sunset. That's what it says.
City Solicitor, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in. Could you just provide that citation there?
Sure. 8-118, and then the hour is prohibited is 8-123 of the city code.
So I just ask you to review those ordinances too, just so you're up to speed before you get going?
Will you be wearing a badge?
Yes.
As well? Okay.
And I would be wearing proper attire when I'm out there, so people visibly know what company I represent.
So one of the concerns that we've had in the past with people going door-to-door is that they have a tendency, if no one answers the front door, they go around to the side door, or they go around to the back door. That is something we had discussed, whether or not, that we would like not, we would like you not to do.
Okay.
In an event that no one answers the door, please don't knock on a window. That's happened in the past. Don't knock on the side door or the back door. I mean, this is just a suggestion, I'm my pop. It's been a problem in the past, and going forward, this is something that we would not like to see.
Of course. And if I did that, that would be very unprofessional to knock on windows.
Mm-hmm. It's happened, believe it or not.
Okay. Just, Mr. President, one question. So the name of your company is Trinity Solar?
You are correct, yeah.
And is there a website, if we wanted to look it up?
Of course, I actually have business cards too, if any of you folks are interested in researching it a little bit, and want to get in contact with me also. That is an option. I leave business cards with people, too.
Okay. If you don't mind leaving them right there at the...
Do you want one for...
The city solicitor will pass them down to us.
Everything seems to be in order, Mr. President. I'll move approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
We have a second on the motion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Next item is application for special event alcoholic beverage Class F1. Name of the applicant is Susan Costa. The date of the event is September 29th. The event is a tailgate party. The location is E.P. Elks Lodge on 60 Berkeley Street.
Is the applicant present at this time? Is the applicant or representative present at this time?
I believe Miss Costa had a scheduling conflict today and wasn't able to attend.
Okay. Is there any issues or concerns or problems that you foresee, or do we have all the information, paperwork completed?
Yep, everything's...
And, Mr. President, if I can ask, it's at the Elks. Is Miss Costa a member of this club, the Elks, or is this a outside person just using the Elks? Why I ask is the Elks do some great work statewide, I guess, countrywide, and do a lot of stuff for veterans, and so just was wondering if the Elks... I assume the Elks are behind this 100 percent. I mean, I'll move approval.
Well, I could speak to that. Miss Costa has always been the person who has applied for these events, and they always seem to be for the Elks. Previously, it was approved by the council to have the outdoor movie night and things like that. So it does seem, I'm not sure of her membership, but it does seem that she is the person who is maybe the event coordinator for the Elks for things like this.
So as it stands, we have a move for motion to, for approval by Councilman Rodrick.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is application for special event alcoholic beverage Class F. Name of the applicant is Reverend David E. Green. The date of the event is September 28, 2019. The event is talent show and dinner, and the location is St. Martha's Church, 2595 Protecton Avenue.
Now, I don't see Father Green present here, however, is there a member of the church that would like to come up and speak on behalf or against this? Or is anyone here? I'm a member of St. Martha's. I've known in the past, they've done a great job with any and all the events that they've had, so I don't see any issue or problems with pursuing this for us for approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion? We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you. That will conclude licenses require public, not requiring public hearing. We'll move right on to communications.
Yes. Communications, the first item is Riverside Renaissance Movement and Roger Williams University Center for Workforce and Professional Development Partnership, presented by Katie Eric Cook and Jason Rafferty.
Guess I thank you, Council, for having us this evening. I had prepared about a two-page overview, and in light of the fact that our partners from Roger Williams have a far better presentation than my own, I'm gonna make mine brief. As you've been aware, Riverside Renaissance has been very active in bringing local education to the community. About a year and a half ago, we first did a three-part program for writers, or writers that want-to-be writers, and we also did one on starting a business in your own community. We managed to get 17 attendees average per event during the course of those. And this all came about because I participated soon after I moved to this community in the Working Cities Challenge, and one of the things that we noted, two things really, one was that we are losing in East Providence the 18-35-year-old cohort, and this has been going on for well over 40 years. So in other words, those of our children who are graduating from high school are looking elsewhere for education opportunities and for work opportunities. Also, another thing that we noted from this study was that East Providence as a whole had a pretty decent college graduation rate. I remember, if I recall right, it was in the 30 percent range. But many of our college graduates, like me and like Nate, who went to school a long time ago, and so the job skills that we have are not what economic development is looking for now. So for that reason, we decided to look further, and after a few false starts, we developed a relationship with Roger Williams University. They're here tonight. We've just, we're just on the cusp of starting what I think is a very comprehensive program. I'm gonna let them make the presentation on it, and if there's any questions after the fact, I'll be happy to weigh in as well. Also, so let me see, first of all, Tanya Betancourt is here from Riverside Renaissance as well. We have additional flyers to hand out to the audience, so everybody can see what you folks are seeing in the flyer that we sent out. I'm also going to introduce the community coordinator, Allegra Brosco. I'm going to introduce Kristin Zimmerman, who is the program design specialist, and first and foremost, the VP of University College. That's Jamie Skurri, and she's gonna lead off this show. So I will step aside. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the Council for your time tonight. So as was said, I'm Jamie Skurri, and the Vice President of University College, and a lot of folks don't know what University College is. We're located in Providence, and what I would say is, we are the extension of the university that really tries to, instead of preventing brain drain, harnessing existing brains of Rhode Island, and how do we really pull that innuendo together and work with multi-generational communities, right, to create sustainable economic development. We do that in a number of ways. We have degree programs, but we're not here to talk about those tonight. We're gonna talk about our Center for Workforce and Professional Development. And one of the things that we do is really try to work in unison, so we're not about coming in and being the only institution that a community would work with. How do we link arms? How do we identify your goals, and then align those programs to those goals? And how do we generate economic development in a way that is authentic, so it honors the cultural and ecological context of the community? How do we link arms with those partners, so that we're not pushing people out? We're adding more people to create those opportunities. And one of the ways that we've done it, which we're not here to talk about tonight, but I think it's important for you to be aware of, I have MOUs with three cities. So we have an MOU with the City of Central Falls, the City of Pawtucket, and most recently, the City of Cranston. And the point of that is, is that what we found was, when we work with the school departments, or we work with municipalities, or we work with the drivers of economic development or housing, we're kind of working in silos, as opposed to working together to say, how do we be more efficient and effective? How do we all understand where our endpoint is? And how do we bring the resources that we have, which are pretty rich, to the table to help, again, move the dial? So I'm not gonna take up too much time, because Kristin really can talk you through the programs, but just understand why we're a private institution, we really do work in the public good, and are here to remove whatever barriers and obstacles you may face or your communities may face in doing exactly what was just detailed.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. So my name is Kristin Zimmerman. I'm the program design specialist for the Center for Workforce and Professional Development at Roger Williams University, University College. And what I'm charged with, I'm charged with the task of creating programs, not only for the community, but training and workforce, job readiness programs, corporate and community partnership, training programs, and development and training for educators and schools as So the Training for Workforce and Job Readiness, so this program ensures that Rhode Islanders who are seeking employment opportunities are successfully prepared to do so. So the CWPD offers individualized career pathways for adult learners, enabling them to be well-prepared for career success, through soft skills training and content knowledge as well. Currently, we have two extremely successful programs, a legal assistant program and a business office technology program. And the business office technology program focuses on accounting, bookkeeping, Microsoft Office Specialist Certification in Word and Excel, and that's what I'm going to propose to you folks this evening. And in the Training for Workforce and Job Readiness, each student is prepared to take advantage of local employment opportunities. So what we teach them, we give them all the necessary skills that they need in order to be successful in the workplace. to be successful in the workplace. The CWPD partners with businesses and organizations like the Riverside Renaissance Movement to develop custom training and education programs that prepare their workforce and leadership team to drive growth. So we provide custom courses, and that's what we're doing right now, working very closely with Eric Cook, to develop a program that is going to appeal to the population of Riverside, and will also help them in their workplace and help them to advance in the workplace as well. We also do development and training for educators at schools, and currently, I am working with the Pawtucket School Department, particularly Shea High School, and we have worked with them this past spring, and we conducted an SAT prep class. And what we did was, it was for eight weeks, we had 58 students, and we started the first week facilitating a practice test. And then what we did was, we taught them about fractions, whole numbers, percentages, we did algebra, geometry, and then at the end of the eight weeks, we administered another SAT practice test. And it was discovered that the average increase in the SAT score was 121 points, which is really remarkable. So the program I'd like to speak to you about tonight is called the Microsoft Office Specialist. And the Microsoft Office Specialists have universal skills necessary for individuals to stand out and compete in the workforce. So it has been cited, and I think it's actually in the flyer that you have, that an individual who entered, has an entry-level position, who is a Microsoft Office Specialist certified, can earn up to $16,000 more than the counterpart who does not have that certification. And benefits of Microsoft certification, so there is a research study that was conducted in 2012 at the University of Utah, that while many employees may know enough about Microsoft Office to get by, Microsoft Office Specialist certified employees gain valuable skills that improve their efficiency and productivity, encourage them to seek opportunities to perform more complex tasks, and assist their coworkers, and enjoy more satisfaction in their employment. So I'd like to share some great statistics with you. 89 percent of supervisors say that the Microsoft Office Specialist certified employees are more proficient users of Microsoft Office programs. 88 percent of certified employees said MOS certification made them more effective in their work. 82 percent of employees said MOS certified gave them more confidence in their abilities as workers, and 81 percent of certified employees said they are more dedicated to their employer after being given the opportunity to become MOS certified. So I'm just going to go briefly, the three applications that we are working with Eric Cook on to present to the residents of Riverside are Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, and Microsoft PowerPoint. Now, Microsoft Word teaches the information worker how to use core skills to work with business documents, such as letters, forms, and newsletters. And, hmm? I missed one. Okay, excuse me. And Microsoft Excel teaches the information worker how to work with different types of documents, using a variety of core and intermediate features to create and edit professional-looking spreadsheets for a variety of purposes and situations. And then Microsoft PowerPoint teaches the information worker how to create and manage presentations using a variety of core and intermediate features. We can just skip over this. Now, G-Metrics is a skills management system that we utilize in our teaching for the MOS certification, and it's a performance-based testing program that can be used for identifying areas of need for training in preparation for the certification exam. Now, G-Metrics is a program that allows the participants to practice taking the Microsoft Office Specialist certification exams, and if the participants properly use G-Metrics to the point that it's supposed to be used, the pass rate is over 95 percent. So although we would be facilitating this training at St. Brendan Church in Riverside, the testing, all the testing has to take place at Roger Williams University in Providence. And we are proposing that the program is for 12 weeks. It's two hours every Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and so that's a total of 24 instructional hours. Now, in order for a student to, or a participant to be fully prepared to take the certification exam and pass, they have to clock a minimum of 40 hours. That's the average. That can change. It could be less, it could be more, depending upon the experience and the skill level of the participant. Now, Roger Williams University will provide all the laptops for the training. So we have, our goal is to have 12 participants in this program, and we have 12 laptops that will be utilized, and then we're going to bring them to St. Brendan's Church. So whoever chooses to enroll in the program can utilize the laptops. Now, the proposed course offerings and costs, so the way we're going to set this up, it's September 19th at the library from 6:00 to 7:30, we have slated a introduction, a presentation of course offerings. So during that hour and a half, we're going to explain to anybody who's interested what we're going to present, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, we have social media for business, we have cybersecurity for business and home, introduction to QuickBooks. Now, then, on a separate, on separate meetings, we're going to explain what Word is. So what that's going to look like, the participants who decide to enroll in the Microsoft Word, we're actually going to have the instructor model via presentation of what the student or participant can expect to learn, and she'll do that for Excel and PowerPoint as well. And those classes are $35. So the whole point of those classes, it's just for someone to come and get an idea of what they can learn, or, you know, of what they want to learn and that they wish they knew. So the, what I'm really excited about is the total cost offering for Microsoft Office Specialist. We are charging $395. That includes 24 hours of instruction and support, and also, that includes one voucher to sit for the certified exam. Now, this, the voucher, if someone were to go and pay for it themselves, the voucher would cost them $120, just for the voucher itself. A course like this, including the voucher, could cost them $1,500. So what we are doing is, we're offering a 70 percent discount to the residents of Riverside to take advantage of this program. Okay, and this, and this is just the schedule of the course offerings. So as I said, the presentation starts on September 9th, and then on September, on October 10th would be Microsoft Word, October 12th is a Saturday, that's introduction to social media, then, and so forth. And then October 31st to January 30th, that's more than 12 weeks, but we took out two weeks for the holidays. And that's when, anybody who would be interested, that's when we would be facilitating the Microsoft Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, if I may. So I hear you keep mentioning that available for the residents of Riverside. Is it strictly Riverside, or is it all of East Providence?
Let me answer that.
Let me.
So you're getting yourself in trouble.
Yeah. And I know you probably say that because of Riverside Renaissance.
So Anna, so you don't think that we're about to secede from the city? It is being offered to everybody in the city. It's being offered to everybody in the state. What we want to do is bring people to our community to get this type of program, because if you look back, and I know you folks have a much longer history here than I do, we have not had any facilities of higher education in the city of East Providence in over 30 years. So your support is important, it's of tantamount support to this, because in order for this to succeed, we're starting with a population who, up to now, has had no interest in looking at the local community for higher education-type experiences, because they weren't being offered. And that's one of the reasons why we've been losing all those high school graduates, right? Because the opportunity, even if you're going to do a vocational training, this is certainly a step beyond vocational training. But this is, this is being offered to everybody. I think it's a very, very good question. There'll be advertising going out. We're going to try and advertise as broadly and widely as possible, right? And anything that you folks happen to say to your individual constituents, you know, this is an opportunity for them to upgrade their professional skills.
So they also mentioned that it's, initially, it'll be 12 computers provided by Roger Williams, but anyone who is interested beyond the 12 could bring their own laptop or equipment.
Unfortunately not. The reason being is, we don't know, first of all, Chromebooks and Macs are not compatible with the Jasper Active Training Program that we use. In addition, we need to have a certain addition of Windows. Some people could have Windows 7, some people could have Windows 8 or Windows 10. And unfortunately, what would happen if individuals would bring their own laptops with them, unfortunately, the instructor would spend more time troubleshooting than actually instructing.
So if I can ask, we have, you have more folks, we have additional computers.
Step up to the podium.
Because I'm just wondering if this, because this is, this is a great opportunity for a lot of people from a wide range of age.
If you had, yeah, if you had more people, we have additional computers that we could bring.
Could bring, okay.
Or I can't bring 30 more over, but I could certainly bring 10 or 15 more over.
Sure, so that leads into my next question, is how would you choose? Is it a first-come, first-served basis? If you're limited in the equipment, how would you choose? If 25 people came and were interested, checkbooks at hand, how would you be able to?
She can get 25.
And I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I don't know what the, what people in the community are looking for, but it is a great deal, and it's a great savings to a lot of people in the community, so you may get larger numbers than you anticipate.
It's typically first-come, first-served, but however you all wanted to structure it, is how we would structure it.
You know, we hashed this out quite a bit, obviously, before we got to this podium.
Sure.
And I have to also give credit to Jamie here, because as you can imagine, their IT program or department said, no way are these laptops going anywhere. Now, this is a big issue. We're a local community. As you know, we're all townies. We don't like going across the river. All these laptops are coming to us from across the river, right? So that's a big change in and of itself. And we've been making the argument with Roger Williams that the opportunity for them as well is to bring more programs to the local community and have these classes done in the local community.
I'd love to speak to that when you're, yeah, sure.
One point, and I'll turn it over to you. And also, I want to touch on one other thing. We had to cross another bridge, a big bridge, getting to St. Brendan's, because as many of you are aware, St. Brendan's has not been used effectively as a classroom space since, like, the station fire. So in addition to having this program start now, we've also been in discussion with the Bristol campus at Roger Williams, and the School of Architecture is bringing in interns to look at the designs of the classrooms now, and look at the handicap accessibility issues that the building has. And they're going to be proposing upgrades to the facility as well, so that going forward, we could take, I think there's like 15 classrooms there, that are, have been, have been completely unused for, we're talking about like 15 years, and bringing those back to the community so that we can, all right, I'll have to say, Call of the Renaissance. But anyway, please.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to make this very brief, because there's a lot more for you all to do this evening. I just want to say one other thing that's really interesting also for everybody here. I'm the community outreach coordinator, one of them at University College. And what's also really great are these other programs that they also have, which would be interesting to introduce to East Providence. Things like an electrician apprentice program, right? There is also legal assistant program, and all of these programs are designed so that way the individual can do more of what they want to do. If they want to stop as legal assistant, they can. If they want to go on to be a paralegal, they can. And so I think this is an interesting relationship insofar, it's not just with the MOS, but with the ability to see what else East Providence at large might want that would help their community. And there's such a diverse array, I mean, it's incredible the amount of programs that University College has for the non-traditional student. So on that note, I will turn it over to anyone else, but I think.
Just a couple of quick points, while certainly this is a great idea. Your purpose tonight is for information, right? There's no vote required of the city council.
Well, there's no vote required on your part, but an expression of support from you all, I think, would.
Support, that sort of thing.
Sure. And part two is, just so, and you certainly, I would support something like this, but I don't want anyone through the past years, and as you mentioned, not being around, but I do have a good amount of institutional memory in EP. And certainly, our Career Center has done things similar to this in the past, and may still be doing some. And we've had CCRI, RIC, URI, you know, adult-led programs. I took one of them, you know, in Word. That's why I'm such a good typist today. But, so I just want the public at large to know, you know, similar services have been available and may still be being offered in our Career Center, you know, evenings. Some years, not a lot of people came forward, other years, they had to turn them away. But the more, the better, and this would have my support. It doesn't sound like, you know, we have a standing in this in terms of permission, but if you're looking for support, you have, you have that, I think.
Well, I appreciate that.
And St. Brendan's being a private school, you know, there isn't a correlation there either, that we can approve something that, if they want to do it, and I don't know, are they renting rooms to you? Is that how this works?
First round is free.
Okay.
And later down the road, when there's more programs, basically, their only concern is, you know, the janitorial cost, right? They just want to make sure that that's covered.
Sure.
I have to tell you, you know, Father Codig has been great, right? He's given us overwhelming support, sometimes more than I would have asked for. I mean, sometimes, you know, I say, well, can you put your foot down someplace? Say, no, no, you can't do it that way. He's been wonderful in bringing this forward. Also, I happen to strongly agree with you. When I was working on the, you know, the Cities Program, this is like two and a half years ago, if you think back then, the city was in a If you think back then, the city was in a much different economic circumstance. And one of the things that we noticed at that time was that there was a real dearth of educational opportunities being offered. And I think that the entire city has come around in that direction. So, I mean, I'm happy to see that, you know, being done by anyone and, you know, in any direction to provide more educational opportunities. I think the reason we carved this out was because it was an area that we didn't see a whole lot being done at the moment. We had also looked at nursing programs.
Excuse me, sir. Can you stand in front of the podium so they can hear? And just so we could, so I can move this meeting along as well.
Okay.
I'm just going to ask the council if we have any other, if anybody has any other questions. Councilman Murato.
I just have one question. First, I want to let you know that I do support the program. I thank you for bringing that to not only the residents of Riverside, but the entire city. Is there a way, from Madam Clark, that we can post this on the council's website? This information?
I can work with Mayor's Office. Absolutely.
Would you like this, or would you like a link of some sort?
I would love it. Take it and post it.
Okay.
You can post it in every room in City Hall for all I care.
So with that being, any other further questions from the council? So with that being said, I mean, it seems unanimous that you have our support here as to what you're doing. We appreciate your efforts and coming forward, sharing this public announcement with us. And I think going forward, you know, the public will be well informed as to us spreading the word as far as we can help you out. So, thank you, sir.
Well, then, we thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sure. Just so we can move this meeting along, and we know we have one other item in communication. Madam Clark?
The next item on communications is East Providence School Department Budget Presentation for the 2019-2020 Fiscal Year, presented by Superintendent Catherine Crowley and Finance Director Craig Ennis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to appear before you this evening. It's always a pleasure to be here at this time of year and presenting our annual budget to you. I just want to talk a little bit about the process that we go through. This process probably starts in about May. And what we do in May, right after our teacher job placement, is to make a list of all our employees and any new positions that might be available and the positions that those employees bid into. We look at the increase in our benefits, our health benefits. We look at increases in our pension. And we have listed our entire personnel with all of their salaries and all of their benefits for the coming year. And at that time, we have pretty solid evidence of what that is. We present that to school committee first because that compromises about eighty percent of our total budget is in the area personnel. And then, from there, we proceed to the second half of the budget where we use this year's budget line items. We looked at what we use this year, and then we generate new line items for the coming year where we think that there would be increases in those line items. And then we present that to the school committee for discussion, and then the entire budget goes back to them for approval. And the budget you have before you this evening, which we presented to the mayor about a week ago, correct, Craig, is the budget that you have before you this evening. So Mr. Ennis, our Director of Finance, who really worked on this the summer I was out for most of the summer, and Mr. Ennis and my team, Dr. Fran and Dr. Bowler and Bud McDoel, as Red as Craig Ennis, all put this together while I was out this summer. So I thank them very much for this, what I think is a very, very sound and reasonable budget. So we have a little presentation for you.
However, Superintendent, before we proceed with the presentation, I just want to make it clear that we all realize that the Superintendent was selected as Superintendent of the Year.
Thanks.
So I just felt like I needed to point that out.
Thank you.
So congratulations, good job, and keep up the good work.
I was actually going to come across the stage in my gurney that I came across a convocation singing, you know, "Staying Alive, Staying Alive." But I thought that might be a little much. So I'm going to do this over.
You're not correct. You can do it here if you want.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, for some reason, can't figure out why, can't get the presentation up on the screen for you, but it's the presentation that you have in front of you.
Is the tech person here?
I'm trying to find him right now.
Okay.
Can't figure out why. I thought I did what I was supposed to do, but it's not coming up for some reason.
Is it frozen? It needs to be rebooted.
So we are coming to you for this evening to request a municipal appropriation of fifty million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This request is an increase of two million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, thirty-three dollars over the fiscal year nineteen appropriation. To compare, our increase from the city last year was two million, one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. So in the end, we're asking for an additional two hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. Our budget goals include honoring the contractual obligations for our four bargaining units. This is the last year of all four of the contracts. We also continue our investments in the district curricula and technology, and we continue our investments in facilities and security. For all of our curricula, everything, all of our curricula has been updated and will be on a cycle for review. This year, we will begin an electrical program at the CTC, which is partially grant-funded. And this year, we opened up a new grant-funded pre-K classroom at Oldham. For the increase, we are requesting two million, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars is just for the contractual salary and benefit obligations. This leaves three hundred and sixty-two thousand, thirty-three dollars to go towards programming and the needs of our students. With regards to transportation, we agreed to a one-year contract extension with Ocean State Transit. Thank you. Hold on one second. Not going to touch it. So as I said, for transportation, we agreed to a one-year contract extension with Ocean State Transit at no cost to us. This past year, we expended over two hundred thousand dollars in unbudgeted transportation costs related to students that are in the custody of DCYF or determined by DCYF that East Providence is responsible for educating students in their care. These costs were through the statewide transportation.
Craig, could I just interrupt for one second? And I'm just sitting out there so I can see. But can you just elaborate on that a little bit so everybody kind of understands what that is, right? The DCYF, ESSA, and our obligations as a city with regard to how that whole thing works?
Sure. So we have group home beds that are here. Some of the students that come here might be a regular education student, or sometimes there are students that are also placed here in a foster placement. And we are obligated to transport them, it could be back to the district where they came from if they were homeless, which is separate from being in the custody of the DCYF. But between homelessness, DCYF, and also, we have students where if there is a disagreement with where the student should be educated, DCYF now has the authority to make that determination. And it seems that East Providence is on the losing end of that stick for most times, even though we do fight those cases as we can. But there are many cases where it's just not in our control. So we certainly try to do that. But with the costs for that, that was originally done through the statewide transportation system. And so what our, Diana Clark, and our Director of Transportation, she negotiated a deal with Ocean State Transit that if we were to move those, move the transportation for those students to Ocean State Transit, we can therefore have some savings, about seventy thousand dollars. So we definitely are moving forward and looking for ways that we can save the resources.
Yeah. And I'll just add that our Representative Greg Gomori, oh. This is a huge bone of contention in districts throughout the state, so it's not only East Providence. Our Representative Greg Gomori is helping us to fight that in the legislature. He tried last year, but Rhode Island, you know, really didn't know DCYF, certainly didn't have the money to support for the transportation. So he's going to continue to support our efforts to try to get the state to take over the ESSA course.
And finally, in terms of technology, the upcoming year will be our third year at having a district technology team. The first year was simply the assessment and evaluation of the existing technology that we had. This past school year, as the second year, our staff were focused on reduction of excess, the legacy equipment, and the streamlining of the technology that we had. And so for this upcoming third year, it will mark the turning point for us. We will be able to flip from reactive technology support to a proactive maintenance lifecycle. What we will be doing is we will continue to support the one-to-one initiative for all of our students. We will be upgrading a thousand student devices to the latest technology. We will be updating fifty classrooms with interactive flat panel displays that we can replace these failing smart boards. And lastly, we will upgrade the oldest of the staff computers that we have within the district. By replacing the aging hardware as part of a scheduled lifecycle, we can maintain a predictable annual technology operating budget and avoid ballooning costs every three to five years. Our special education staff continue to work hard at maintaining students here within the East Providence schools. However, last school year, we had thirty-one new out-of-district placements, and there's the breakdown that we did for last year in terms of where students fell within that. But as we have said in the past, this is an area where, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control. In particular, if a student moves into the district with an IEP that has an out-of-district placement, then we're stuck. We own it. And I think this summer, we've had up to seven, about seven so far.
Eight.
Eight, over about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Not in this budget. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars since the budget was approved by the school committee.
And that's just the tuition costs. That's not including what the transportation costs are. Because even though you might have a buses going to one school statewide, they still charge you more money for that additional student. We've had a busy year for our capital investments in fiscal year 2019. All of, oh, changed here. Didn't change. If I change here. All of the larger projects that we have completed are reimbursable from the Department of Education, either through Housing Aid or through the School Building Authority Capital Fund at a rate of fifty-four point five percent. We completed fire life safety upgrades at Silver Spring, Orlo Avenue, and Kent Heights. We continued our LED lighting replacement project at most of our elementary schools. And we completed a remodel of the exterior sidewalks and parking lot at Silver Spring Elementary School. We also completed a partial roof replacement at Kent Heights Elementary. See if it'll work now. Nope. And we did a full roof replacement at Riverside School. We were very excited to get these projects done. Oh, there we go. Okay. Just needed a little bit. And, oh, okay.
We're back.
We're back.
It's the server.
Yep. So there's the project, there's the front of Silver Spring, and pictures of the skylights at Kent Heights. Certainly, doing a roof is not totally exciting, but if you saw from Google Earth the holes that were in the roof, we were very glad to get these roofs done and to take care of our school sites. For fiscal year 2020, we have some exciting capital investments that we will be making for our community. First is the redesign of the academic houses at Martin. As you are aware, this school was built in the 1970s with an open classroom model. We need to turn Martin into a 21st century learning environment for our students. Currently, we have an architect and engineering RFQ that has been out and was submitted last week, and we're going to be interviewing some architect and engineering firms within the coming weeks. But this issue for the redesign was noted within the Jacobs Report and as part of our five-year capital plan. This will be a build-as-we-go model, a five-year process. Our first year for this coming year, it will simply be planning and designing. We have to follow all of the stages, stages one, two, and three, with the Department of Education. So there's going to be a lot of meetings over the coming year with the community at Martin, with the administrators, with the students, with the families, to get their We are told that a remodel of one academic house could take about from nine to twelve months. So I think we're looking about a five-year project with a year of planning, and then we do one academic house, and then we move everyone over to the new academic house and move on to the next. We'll be shuffling around a lot, quite a bit. And because this project will be over one point five million dollars, we have to have an onus project manager, the Paragon Group, which is working with us on the high school building project, will be helping us out with this project as well. Correct. So unfortunately, so the next slide, I do need to skip over because that issue has not been, I thought it was formally voted upon by the school committee, and so that has not been addressed by the school committee yet. So we will not, I will not be able to talk about that.
It's also a safety issue, so we didn't discuss it.
And finally, another capital investment, which was noted as part of the Jacobs Report, is the replacement of the exterior windows at Riverside. The Paragon Group will be working with us on this project as well. We need to hire an architect firm to come in to do the design. We'll develop an RFP, and we anticipate, we know that this project will be completed before June 30th. And lastly, we have some chimney repointing and masonry work that needs to be completed at Silver Spring and Hennessy Schools. We thank you for this opportunity. We are grateful for all of the support that you've given us over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure of the council. If you have any questions? I know I do, but.
What would be the total, so what's the total increase from last year to this year?
So.
Two point three.
So last year's increase was a little bit over two point one million, two million one oh eight, and we're asking for an additional two eighty-two, three eleven. So that would bring our total increase request to two million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, thirty-three dollars.
So with respect to your capital investments for fire, life, and safety upgrades, you have mentioned the three schools here, Silver Spring, Orlo, and Kent Heights. Does this complete, or does it go back to what you were saying later on in the presentation about you can't get into it? Nothing has been approved by the school committee? But will this, or does this complete your fire, life, and safety for your elementary schools?
I believe so, Tony, right?
Yes.
Because I know this has been an ongoing process.
On going, you've done a little bit.
So, and you've been doing a little out of time.
Correct.
So this completes all?
Correct. Yep.
That's good.
And Martin, and you know, as we're saying, I mean, Martin is really going to be the focus for the next five years.
Right. Well, right now, you've completed the elementary schools because if, going back a couple of years ago, I'd known this was a big back a couple of years ago, I'd known this was a big concern, you're really looking into addressing these issues and these concerns, and since then, they've all been taken care of, which is a good sign because, again...
Fire alarms, sprinklers, all done.
Life and safety, so that's good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. President, just looking quickly, a little bit of math, because it shows about 18 staff reductions in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, and you're comfortable, you know, things are, I'm sure you'd always like more staff, but you're okay with that, obviously, you wouldn't be here.
Right.
So it is showing less staff this year than last year?
Yes, it is.
Of all, okay. And more of a comment than a question right now is, and we had asked Mr. Fiola to come to our last meeting, and I think many in Rhode Island understand that the prestigious Johns Hopkins University study on public school infrastructure was very negative towards most of, a lot of the bigger cities in the state. I just want to say, and one who has been close to school department issues for a long time, that I'm very pleased to see, and as Mr. Fiola in the superintendent's report showed us, we've done a lot. Our schools appear to be in as good a shape as they can be. I'm sure teachers and other staff would always want more in their own Taj Mahal, but, you know, we're in pretty good shape. We know about our state-of-the-art high school that should be opening up in a couple of short years. So for once, this is an elected official who has appreciated that schools are getting some serious attention. I lived in a time when that wasn't the case, all the time. Not saying that schools are always perfect and may not be perfect now, we might find a little something here, there's always something to find, to move around. But I was very involved when requests were made to fix roofs, and it was denied. And so what happens? You don't fix a roof at $200,000, and seven years later, when you finally have to fix it, it costs $900,000. So I just want to say, as a parent of children who had gone through the schools, have some grandchildren now in the schools, and now as an elected city councilor, while I pledge to keep a pretty sharp pencil as much as possible, I appreciate that the schools are getting some serious attention and are starting to become the envy of, I mean, people, we hear it all the time, they look at schools before they move to a city. I appreciate that we have a mayor who on Friday mornings does the high-five at our schools. You know, now that doesn't help the budget, but it certainly helps the psyche in East Providence, because we never had that before. We didn't have major city administrators who would come into our schools. It was us against them for many, many years. And I think we're all us right now, and that's the way it should be. The infrastructure in East Providence, what is the biggest infrastructure? The school department. Who has more buildings, the school system? Who has more employees, the school system? Who's servicing almost 6,000 students? And also 1,200 or so non-public students that we still have to provide services for. I was there when I would help register students, and if they came in with special needs, as you just stated earlier tonight, there's already $300,000 or more, I mean, closer to four, that you didn't know about. You can't budget for all that stuff. And finally, I like that you're showing individual salaries here. We can see everybody's salary, benefits, and it gives us a clear, direct picture. I'll find something negative to say in a couple of minutes, let me look, but I had to get that off my chest at this point.
Well, Commissioner was here this morning, she visited Riverside, she called and asked if she could come to East Providence, and she came this morning. She's already, she's been at Martin, and she's been at the high school, and this was her third time in East Providence. And she visited Riverside Middle School this morning, Jessica Bochane was there when she came this morning. She toured the building, and she is amazed at the facilities and how, what the facilities look like with the age of the buildings, and you know that she's facing a dire situation there in Providence, where that hasn't been the case. So she also is amazed at the cleanliness of the buildings, and luckily, one of the maintenance gentlemen was going by, and I introduced him to the commissioner to let him know that he's one of the many individuals we have. We have a great maintenance and custodial staff that works very closely with us to upkeep our buildings, and we really couldn't do it without their support, truly. And they take such pride in their work. Providence is privatized, and they have a big company that comes in, and their experience, well, I won't even go into that. But our understanding is, at this point in time, East Providence is being used as an example at the Rhode Island Department of Education as to where a city can move forward. And I think we're all very proud of that. I'm happy for the residents of East Providence, I'm very proud of that as a superintendent, and the work that we've all, including our school committee, has put into this venture for children. So this is a very fiscally responsible budget, I'm just going to say that. Our capital improvement line item, that didn't exist before, so some of those projects you weren't able to do, all of the returns on our projects that we get, we put right back into that capital improvement line item so that we can keep using that money and getting a return. Now, because of the incentives that are out there, when we do the work at Martin, we could again, instead of 54.5%, we can actually get as much as 74.5% return on the money we spend at Martin, right now while the upfront money is available. So I think, you know, this is very good, East Providence.
Very good.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Craig, could I ask you to read me a couple of numbers, if you don't mind?
Sure.
The total appropriation that the school department is requesting from the city is what, again? And the total salary obligation of the school department of the city of East Providence is what?
Oh, shoot, let me get my folder, sorry.
I, I'm looking at $49,753,000, is that right? I got the right number there?
Yes, salaries is $49,689,72.
Okay, I'm off a little bit.
Yep.
All right, so then this will mark the first time in my involvement with city politics, school department, city council, whatever, that if the city council were to support this budget request from the school department, this would be the first time that I can think of, that the city appropriation would actually cover the salaries of the school department. Because for every year until now, the city appropriation has fallen short of just the salaries, which are in no way, shape, or form exorbitant in the city of East Providence. So for every other thing that's required, whether that's building maintenance, whether it's programming, whether it's transportation, whether it's paying electricity bills, water bills, repairs, you name it, the city has, for a long, long time, told the school department to go get it from the state. And I think that the school department has done a fantastic job of maintaining that relationship with the state. You did a good job explaining it tonight, that's a complicated thing to do, it's not easy. You know, that 35 million or so that we get from the state is, we couldn't run our school department without. So I'm very encouraged by the fact that the city is beginning, really, I think with, you know, the support that the city showed for the budget last year, the support that the city showed for the school bond initiative, is really beginning to focus, or provide the focus that it needs to provide for the school department. I would like to point out, I point this statistic out every single year, I'd like to point it out again, the amount that the city appropriates toward its school department relative to the other school departments in the state is way, way, way behind every other district in the state. When you correct for state funding, the 35 million that we received, the $253 million in state aid that Providence received, which to me is a crazy number, but when you correct for that number, East Providence is currently at about 32.6% of its total revenue, which goes to schools. You compare that to a place like Barrington where they're at 65, and I'm not saying we're ever going to get to Barrington level, but Cranston, Warwick, they're right around 50. Now, I would encourage everybody to take a look at that and to keep those numbers in mind when we're planning our priorities for coming years. And I would also encourage us all, because I'm certainly going to be doing it, I'm going to be running every single department across the city and finding out where we stand across the state. Because if we're underfunding our schools, we're likely overfunding something else. So thank you very much for the hard work you do. Thank you to you, and you, and you, and you, I know how much work you guys put in. Kathy, thank you very much, thank you, Tony, everybody.
Any other questions at this time? If not, this concludes communications. Adam Clark, we proceed on to the next item.
The next item is public comment. There is a read-in from Wendy Caputo, it has been notarized. She was unable to attend tonight. It's addressed to Councilman Murato. Councilman Murato, if you, how would you like to do this?
Could you please read that? Adam Clark, is that okay?
Is that okay if I read it?
Please request.
Okay.
Yeah, you can sit right there.
Okay, stay here.
Is that all we have for public comment?
That's all we have for public comment. Mm-hmm. This is by, again, this is written by Wendy Susan Caputo, addressed to Councilman Ricardo Murato, Ward 4, East Providence City Council. Dear Councilman Murato, due to a prior commitment, I am unable to attend the city council meeting scheduled for September 3, 2019, and feel a strong need to set the record straight. I have been an active member of the personnel hearing board since my appointment on December 7, 2015. Currently, I serve as secretary. In the past four years, I have missed two meetings, one for surgery and one for a scheduled vacation. The other night, I watched the video of the city council meeting of August 20, 2019. I found the presentation by Victor Santos, Human Resource Director, proposing changes to city ordinance language concerning the personnel hearing board extremely upsetting. With all due respect to Mr. Santos, he is new after all, his statements were inaccurate and untrue. There has never been an issue convening this board. Scheduling three active working adults may require juggling a day here and there, but the weeks and months of delays that Mr. Santos blames on the board are simply not true. These so-called delays were not because HR could not convene the board, the delays were the result of HR not convening the board. Fact is, the Human Resource Department, responsible for convening and scheduling the activity of the board, established a practice of waiting until they accumulated several eligibility and certification lists before calling a meeting. A former HR director told me that the reason for this was not to waste our time. Members of the board are always on call and available. Fact is, the East Providence Human Resource Department has been in flux for years. For the four years I have served, there have been multiple directors, interim directors, even no directors. The second issue I have with Mr. Santos's testimony is that the board is only placing a rubber stamp on what HR, affirmative action, the various department heads, and the mayor have already approved. To some extent, he is correct, we are rubber stamping our approval. However, on occasion, we do not. Yes, I think we should have greater insight into the testing and the ranking of candidates to make a more informed decision, but until we do, this board does its best. Case in point, there was an incident a while back where one city department head asked an interim director to allow a candidate who failed to qualify for the list to circumvent protocol and advance this candidate ahead of the others who did not qualify. This was approved by both affirmative action and HR. When the lists were presented to the board for approval, the breach was soundly rejected. The board took heat for their due diligence, but honesty, transparency, and integrity prevailed. The personnel hearing board is supposed to be an independent watchdog for the residents of our city. Members are not to be interfered with or influenced. The duty we perform is vital. I believe it is a disservice to alter the integrity of the process when that process obviously works, and urge the city council to reject any and all proposed changes to the ordinance language. Respectfully, Wendy S. Caputo, Secretary, East Providence Personnel Hearing Board. And it was notarized on August 28. And that's all we have for public comment.
That was all for public comment? Okay, we'll proceed right on. That concludes public comment, and we'll proceed on right to the next item, please?
Next item, citations we're already taking care of, so we have appointments for the vote, traffic control. Sean M. Feeney, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So I'm going to, if the council doesn't unanimously is okay with me moving also up after this vote, or prior, whatever the council would like, the discussion regarding traffic control appointment, and put them two together?
Together, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay?
So you want to put through the vote for us?
Sure.
Okay.
So I have on for a vote for tonight, this evening, a traffic control appointment for Sean Feeney here in, that lives 22, Lindy Ave in East Providence. This comes at a time where we know that there's a lot of things going on in the summer and throughout the year. A lot of construction has occurred where we need our traffic controllers. Traffic controllers also serve as crossing guards, and then we do have, as most know, special policing who are retired officers who also are involved in some of the detailed work in the community. This gentleman has gone through special training, all out of pocket, which is language that is in the city ordinance or resolutions to do so. He has met all the criterias that are laid out by the city to do his due diligence for this role, and so I move for the council for approval to appoint Mr. Feeney as a traffic control.
So we do have a motion on the floor for approval for traffic control? Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rogers.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Mr. President, if I may, before we go further, I noticed, I remember early in the meeting, we had mentioned if there were department heads present, we would try to not have them stay all night, and I see Mr. Cudo is here now, I'm not sure you were here. I don't know if you need to say anything, or do we have something on the agenda that requires questions of Mr. Cudo, or rather than have him sit here?
I believe...
Till whenever?
Item D.
Did you request, yeah?
Did you request? I don't know, Mr. Cudo, do you have a preference?
But before we proceed, just so we can finish off with the councilwoman's request to take care of this and her...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's okay.
I get it, we'll go.
So to kind of wrap this up, because it's an ongoing discussion amongst council and the city administration, the city administration feels as though the current language that the city has in places and has had in place has some, from what I'm understanding, liability or some holes that they would like to see worked out, and though I appreciate that policy updating, because there are a lot of things that need updating, I don't feel as though hindering the process and that we need to have done. The city has lost daily hundreds of dollars not having these traffic control people who are qualified and able to work in the city take a post, and that includes them and their vehicles that they would be utilizing. The city doesn't pay for these traffic controllers or special police officers who are retired, their third-party billing. Obviously, there are things that need to be worked out that make this administration feel more comfortable in that, but I don't think that it's prudent for us to postpone things that need to be taken care of. And I know the mayor's office has been working on a policy. This policy has been working on for, I think, a couple of months now, so I don't know what the urgency or non-urgency in getting this done, but I would appreciate a little bit timely. I don't know if you're involved, Mike, with getting this done, or if it's just Mr. Fattato that's working on it, but there are people who have been appointed last, I think, term, or last council members, and these current council members, and we still don't have those people working as traffic control officers or civilians that they need to utilize in those positions. So I'm not sure what else the council can say or do to elicit. Does an ordinance need to be written for the mayor's office to take action on these types of issues? of issues? Because it seems like the resolutions don't seem to be worth the paper that they're written on.
The issue of traffic control has been an ongoing issue. For many months, we weren't able to find any resolutions that set up how this was done. We did find them, eventually did find some.
Right.
Other inconsistent. We're concerned about the liability of the city, making sure that they're not considered employees eligible for health care benefits, those kind of issues. So we're in the process of, and we've been in the process of drafting the different tiers and different qualifications that are needed, basically all over the map, so we're trying to get a consistent policy. So we are working on it, but it takes some time.
So there are, there is a resolution, and it does, no benefits have ever been offered to any of these traffic control appointees. They are considered at-will, so to speak, workers. They were only called on a rotation basis based on the vetting of the police stations. So the police department, the chief or his designee are the ones who call out people to come and work, and they vet that whole process. So to say that there isn't something in place, there certainly has been for a number of years. Now whether what's in place is satisfactory to the current administration's office is a different story, but we certainly do have things in place that allow these people to be appointed and work within the city.
Got a question. This program, is it just for citizens? For example, we see the, you know, specialists, they have a different uniform. Per trust, the trust requires that they have different uniforms. They do not carry weapons, and their traffic vehicles are clearly marked "traffic control", and the lights that are on the vehicles can only be in amber color. Or does that include that specification and also retirees?
So the traffic control that have this different uniforms are civilians, so they do not carry firearms. They don't have that type of training. Retired police officers, however, per our city charter, they are allowed to carry a firearm. They have to maintain training, in-service training every year, and I'm sure that would come with their firearms requirements. But there is a difference between the two, and I think there's a pay difference between the two because of the responsibility.
So the, so this resolution as the one that's been in place since 1998, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
This is only, this discussion is only for citizens, civilians who want to do, or would like to do, or get appointed to doing traffic control, correct?
They apply to both, because it's, the council has appointed retired officers.
Is it contractual? Does the police union have it in their contract that upon retirement, that they are placed on a detailed list?
You're talking about retirees?
Mm-hmm.
No. That in the previous police contract, it did address a section of the special officers, but since then, the whole reason that we're in this situation is because, I believe it was the trust, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the trust chose not to ensure the program because it was a liability, but, so this current contract doesn't have it. Now, the current traffic control officers that we use, which is kind of, it's a mix of people doing detail, but also the crossing guards, so the pay gets overlapped, that's just based off of the previous contract, but there's nothing concrete going off of it. Then on top of that, the issue would arise addressing retired officers and positions of traffic control and putting that in a police contract. I, it's not for me personally to weigh in, but I, well, personally, I don't believe that would be appropriate to be in a city contract, as they're not current police officers.
So, we have that in our contract. I believe some other municipalities also have that in their contracts, it's a continuing benefit. In 2007, I was serving, and I still am, the president of my union. The trust came out with a blanketed memo to all departments that they covered at the time stating that any retiree, if they had not continued their state mandatory trainings for a period of three years, they would not be allowed to come back into the program. And at that time, they also stated, because we had a few civilians who also acted as auxiliary, per se, and their mandate was that if they, if you have civilians that want to do details, they have to wear different uniforms rather than the police uniforms, and the cruisers have to be labeled differently. And in that process, we actually filed a grievance, and in that grievance process, working together with the trust and the post, the language that's on the Peace Officers Statute 12-7-21, Section 19, that was a result of that grievance that I had filed.
12-what?
Peace Officers Statute 12-7-21, Section 19. Retired non-permanent sworn members of any municipality police department should be deemed to be a peace officer while, only while in the performance of their duties for any municipal police department, and shall be permitted to carry their firearms while in the performance of their duties for the municipal police department, and shall be subject to in-service training requirements, Title 42, Chapter 28. So that allows those police officers, upon retirement, to continue being non-permanent sworn officers, allowing them to have arrest powers while in the performance of doing detail, special events, and so on, as long as they meet the state criteria, which is the continuation of those in-service trainings required by state. So, as far as the governing language and contracts, it's not unique to have contractual language, from my experience, that, you know, they are placed on a detailed list. The statute for the retirees clearly, you know, it's.
Well, that part is, that part is baked in too. I think it's the current contract as far as the, or it's in the ordinance as far as the bidding procedure for details. That is in our ordinance. This is specifically the crux of the problems concerning civilians. And, I mean, yeah, obviously, we don't want civilians having the power to arrest, and it comes to the certification training, and it's, I forget what the specifics are, but, you know, there's the traffic control tier, and then there's the crossing guard tier, and it requires a different level of police supervision to get that criteria. And I think it is, it's an annual renewal?
Actually, it's a one-time, it's offered, it's been offered to every police department. It's just a traffic control certification. Every recruit gets that in the academy. They started doing that about eight years ago. It was a one-time certification, from what I understand, because we're up on all the trainings at work, and that was the one and only traffic control certification we ever got, state mandated.
I'm talking in regards to the crossing guards, civilian crossing guards.
For traffic details.
No, no, no. This is, the traffic control program that we have encompasses both the details and the crossing guards. The crossing guards are not certified to also be working details. The problem that we have right now is we have crossing guards that are doing details because we're so short-staffed.
Right.
Which is a problem, and I concede that too, councilwoman. That is a problem, but at the same time, we also, that's a liability, having crossing guards doing a job that they're not certified to do.
Right, and that's the whole point of being able to appoint, like tonight, somebody who has gone through certification training and giving, and that person being able to now go through the process like others have through HR and the police department, so that they can get on to a traffic control, so that frees up the crossing guards to do what they need to do, which is for all our students throughout the community. Especially during a school, not that schools here, that's where they need to be.
Just to make it clear, anyone can have that certification. DOT flaggers, Lynch flaggers, they all have that certification. They all, they can all do traffic. And I agree that what you're saying, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Souza, that, you know, we appointed the, or whichever way they got that position for crossing guards for that purpose, and that's where they should be utilized, and not taken away from that. The, as far as the trust goes, do you know who pays, is it an individual insurance that is paid annually per person, per member, and who covers that cost?
The city covers the cost for the insurance.
For a member that's on that list?
I think it's, I don't know if it's per member, it's just for the program in general.
Okay.
I really don't know the answer to that, but I'm assuming they got anything else to just cover whatever program that we have. Depending, I don't think it's depending on how many people we have, whether it's one or 20.
Right.
So would this be a matter of cleaning and bringing that resolution from the 90s up to current stuff?
Well, you know, there's a lot of things that happened since the 90s, so we have, we've had, we've had federal health care requirements of how many hours you work a week. That's what we're concerned about. In other words, you know, even though the ordinance may say you don't get benefits, if you're working so many hours a week, you may or be eligible, considered an employee of the city, and therefore eligible for health benefits. Those are the things we're looking at.
Isn't it safe to say that the detail officers and those specials civilians are essentially subcontractors?
I would hope so. I thought I would review them, but.
Because that's.
I'm not so sure that our, what you intend them to be and what they actually are. We've got to make sure that they hit all the criteria laid out for subcontract provision, but yes, generally, yes.
So that would be.
But they use city equipment, right? They use city vehicles. That's one, that's a test, you know, whether, whose equipment are they using? If they're using city equipment, they can be considered a city employee.
And my last question, and this is, as a trust, is this being directed from the insurer? Is this being directed from state statute? Is, has, is there any other municipalities that are having the same issue? Because I haven't heard of any other municipality with the same issue. And I know that there's other municipalities that do use civilians. I don't think there's a lot, but there are some that do use civilians for traffic details.
Being directed by the law department because of the hodgepodge of resolutions and ordinances that we have.
Wouldn't the language then be more of something in the human resource, where when they sign their contracts as, go through the process of filing their paperwork with human resources, wouldn't it then be there that they would be signing some type of a contract saying that I am a, you know, 1090, or I, they must sign liability waivers as part of the process?
So all I can tell you is that the city lost a case in which someone who was an HR director said they were an at-will employee, and the court said that they're not an at-will employee, based upon the ordinances that we had. They were actually a for cause termination employee. So just because you put it in a contract doesn't necessarily means it's true. So the contract was.
This is an appointment versus.
The, 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 the ordinance is inconsistent with the personnel code, and that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
We'll make it very clear that they're non-classified seasonal employees.
Okay. So can we work on that together more?
Yes. Quickly?
Yes, but fast, please.
More weight.
I believe, I believe I emailed you a copy of the latest ordinance, but I can send you another copy.
No, I have a copy of it, but there's, I know what the ordinance is, but what is it that the law office looking for to make it whole?
Time.
Well, I mean.
The poor city solicitor had 25 pages of animal ordinance that he was going through over the weekend.
Well, luckily, we have another city, assistant city solicitor, so maybe we can assist, allocate.
He's not, he's not.
He's not, he, that's not part of his contract.
Contract.
Okay, that's a different discussion then, entirely. All right, I am, I'm all set with this topic, council president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is discussion on obtaining a city council solicitor. Council Vice President Roderick saying, Councilman Morado.
Can I just, did we want to move on?
Yeah, I was hoping to move.
Councilman Cahoon's.
The thing that we wanted to ask, well, at least what I asked Steve to be here for, so he doesn't have to sit there.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Item D.
That's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
It's okay with me.
Please.
I didn't, I didn't realize I asked a question earlier.
I missed it.
Otherwise, I would have had him.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, no apologies.
So do item D, plan to repair sidewalks along Patekett Avenue and Ward 3?
Yes.
Thank you all. And, and, so the stretch of road that I'm talking about is essentially that piece that comes from, like Cumberland Farms runs north up to, like, Warren Avenue, right? Past Funeral Home, past, you know, Kent Heights School, all that section. I know that there's a long, ongoing history with that particular stretch of sidewalk. I'm not talking about the road, I'm talking just about the sidewalk. I know, you know, the Joe Vitale was very focused on it. I know that there are a number of people from Ward 3 that were very focused on it, and I also know that it's completely under the control of the state. So I wanted to ask Steve, you know, if he could kind of give us, like, the history context and see if there's anything that we can do as a council to maybe, maybe help get that, get that kick-started.
Thank you for moving me up. It's, appreciate that, but I don't mind being here anyways, but, so, yeah, it does have a long history, councilman, and the state of Rhode Island has what's called a, you know, transportation improvement program, and it's every five years, they'll come out and they'd ask communities, you know, what is your, you know, top projects? And, I mean, this goes back a good dozen years or so, and we put together our requests and stuck it out in sidewalks was like number one at that, at that list. You know, of course, we always hear that, you know, there's not enough money to do everything that they want to do, you know, the DOT implemented their roadworks program, and that their focus then became all, you know, the bridge work. And as you can see in these problems, they did, a multitude of all the bridges seems like were no, you know, up to a good standard with all our bridges. But what they haven't done is, there hasn't been a lot of focus on their pavement management, you know, being the roads and the sidewalks. And so that continues to be our focus, it continues to be our number-one request. And I know even that the mayor has, has sent correspondence directly to Director Olividi on this. We actually, he and I, we walked the sidewalks, we made a video of the condition of the sidewalks that he intends to send to Director Olividi. But it's a constant battle, it really is, and their, their funding continues to change and shift depending on overall state priorities. You know, now, you know, their big project is a 610 connector, which is taking up a lot of the state funds, because they're going through a whole modification and amendment to that plan now, and once again, they're looking at putting that project, stuck it out of the sidewalk project, off even more, even further out.
Which they've done several times.
Which they've done several times, correct.
If I understand correctly, that the full, like, window of that project, is it like a two-year project from start to finish? Does that sound about right, or?
Yeah, that sounds about right, between, you know, I guess, the engineering behind it and, and doing, doing the work itself. But, but we're, I mean, we're only asking for the sidewalks.
Right.
You know, but they include the entire right-of-way pavement as well. I mean, even last, last year, we spent a significant amount of time to try and come up with, you know, the city administration at the time, a kind of an out-of-the-box thinking to try and get this work done. We wrote down MOU with the DOT in that the administration was willing to actually put the money up front, that the city would do the project, with the thought that once the federal funds became available sometime down the road, 2025, that, that the DOT would then reimburse the city. And it seemed like we were going down that track, like, again, like we went back and forth with their legal office, and at one point, then they just said that's something that we can't do, because we can never guarantee you that that money would ever become available to reimburse you. And so at that point, that, that idea died.
So I guess, what brought this to my attention is, right as soon as I came into office, there's, there's a resident in Ward 3 who's kind of followed this from the beginning, and she had the entire history. She, she like, it was pages, and she sent it to me, I was like, whoa, okay. And then another resident in Ward 3, lovely woman, called me up one day and said, look, I walked to church every day from, you know, this street over there. It's a short trip, but, she's like, come and, come and walk it with me, and she's a little bit older than I am, right? So I, I walked it with her, and, you know, she's like, you know, look at this crack, this pool, this is, she's like, it's kind of tough, and she's like, and I have a friend in a wheelchair who's even tougher. So, understanding that you guys are a bit up against it, given that it's a state effort, I just wanted to see if there's anything, as a council, that we can do to help with the state side. I know I talked to the mayor, he's very focused on it. I think he indicated, actually, his, his preference, right, would be for not. I think he indicated actually his, his preference, right, would be for not the entire right-of-way pavement, right, just the sidewalks, just to get that going. But I was, I was excited to hear that he knew so much about it and he was focused on, on getting that done. I just want to know what we can do to do our part.
Speak with the folks up at the State House, I guess. I don't know if a resolution would help to send to the DOT, possibly.
Okay.
Really, anything and anything, I would think. You know, a little irony, I mean, you've heard of that, the program that the, I think it was a federal program, it was called Safe Route to School. So when that came out, I was like, wow, this is, this is great, maybe we'll get these Patacet Avenue sidewalks done, particularly in the area of Ken Heights. But, you know, then we come to find out, well, it wasn't about rehabbing existing sidewalks, it was about installing new sidewalks. So, which is why then you have a new, you know, the state built those new sidewalks on Dover Avenue, you know, meanwhile, you still have the sidewalks on Patacet Avenue that are right in front of Ken Heights School that are a mess.
Yeah.
But just to put things in perspective as far as that federal program was concerned, because I got a little bit involved with that, but that was introduced, in fact, a grant was awarded to Martin J. Francis when my daughter was in elementary school. She's a senior in college and they just completed that project.
That's the other part of that story.
Last summer, literally.
Ken Heights too, it was the same, yeah.
She was in elementary school and she's going into her senior year in college, and they just completed that project last year, last summer.
Came out great, though.
It did come out, it was nice.
All right, so I mean, if that's it, I mean, that sounds like a kind of low percentage plays, you know, from a council standpoint, but certainly understand that that's under the state's, state's control.
And, and it sounds like it's getting worse. I think Steve said they're putting it off even further.
Yeah.
Bridges.
I just have a question, just curiosity, what was the cost estimated?
I think the state has that at about $4 million.
What would be the cost just to do the sidewalks?
Like, like $2 million?
You've got to do curbs and everything else.
Yeah, so it's a lot of curb work, they'll have to readjust it, all the handicap ramps at all the intersections.
What's the next item?
You know, even on that short walk that I did with the mayor, I noticed a number of even, of drain, drain inlets were just completely just collapsed.
Mr. President, maybe while Director Kudus is here, the very next item relates to him also, and then I think he would be done if we want to continue with that discussion. E, letter E.
The citywide paving-
Citywide paving schedule, I know Councilman Kahoon and I, you know, basically, Steve, and I did speak with the mayor and I think I've got somewhat of an answer, but we did put it on the agenda because, you know, we get a lot of calls. So now, my street has been milled, is that the term?
Correct.
Dug up and ready, but now it's been three weeks, when are they going to finish?
Right.
I'm sure there's a process and, you know, weather and other things come into play, but is that the answer we should give to people when they call us and say, my street got started, that's great, I'm happy, but now it's going on four weeks, what can we expect?
You can direct them to our office, because sometimes there are reasons. Probably the one location down Riverside has probably been the worst with the milling was a project that's not, wasn't a city project, it had to do with National Gridwork.
Grid, yeah.
And the reason why it's taken so long was, you know, obviously, if you've been down there, they did a tremendous amount of gas main work in, I guess, the Dearborn, Monmouth Street area. And then part of their, their permit to repair that trench is to go one foot beyond the outer edge of, of the trench. So typically, a trench is only two or three, two to three feet wide, right, and goes down usually on one side of the road. Our permit requirements are to mill at least one foot beyond that trench back to the curb line. So typically, you get maybe five, six feet along one side, that means you'd have like one seam and then back to the curb. And then any kind of cross trenches, you know, typically, you would see, you know, a three or four foot mill. Well, their contractor, when they came and milled it, they went above and beyond really what the permit required. They milled pretty much half the roadway. And, and their milling widths for the cross cuts were almost a good 10 feet, like the width, entire width of the milling machine. So when we looked at all the pavement area that had actually been milled and what was left, they had milled two-thirds of the road, and then they were going to leave a third of the road that's the existing pavement. And they were ready to go there and pave the following day after they had milled that. After looking at that, we called grid, we put a timeout on that, and of course, I mean, their contractor had to, you know, remobilize somewhere else. And we had worked something out where, because it was J.H. Lynch, we still have an outstanding contract with them from last year, for them to do the remaining one-third of the pavement. So we'll essentially get curb-to-curb streets at, for which one-third of the cost. And I know they're back today, it's all fully milled, and they're, we start paving, I think, tomorrow, then the rest of this week there. But that was probably the worst location. As far as Patacet Hot Mix goes, I think for the most part, they've been, they've been very good. You know, we have, we have in the contract that after a street is milled, they have like seven days to have that buttoned up. For the most part, they've, they've kept with that. But when we get into actually reclaiming the road, when we get down into the gravel and we're starting to fine grade and compact and raising structures and doing that, that's a much more detailed process. And I know in the case in some areas where it's a little bit of both. And that was recently in the Woodbine Emplyon area, where you had, some areas milled, some areas fully reclaimed. Now, they're not going to pave, go back and pave until they have all the area completed, because they've been a paving crew to do, you know, a fair amount of work in one day for the paving crew. So I know that here, it took a little bit more than time than usual, so. But if they have, if you have questions, I mean, they can call our office and we can give them that answer, so.
Overall, what are the major problem you're having? Dearborn seems to be straightened out and actually added savings to the city, but anything else we should know? I'm sure, you know, things don't go as planned on paper, they can't all the time, but we're basically no catastrophic events happening?
No catastrophic events. It's, you know, you're always going to have run into, you know, some issues with some residents here and there, but I think we've been responsive to any concerns. We've done over seven miles this, this past summer. We're about to mobilize into the Interlochen and Barnesdale neighborhood next week, that'll be the next big neighborhood. And then there's a couple of other streets that we need to get done, but, and then at that point, then we'll, we can report back all the streets we did, how much money we've expended to date, and then we'll look forward to, you know, scheduling the work for next, for next year. And then, you know, all this work is being coordinated with National Grid, it's always been looked at as a, as a multi-year program. So I know some people are wondering, like, when's my street going to get done? It's, it's, you know, worse condition than some of the other streets you're doing, but, you know, we need to also wait for grid to do, work on some of the other streets. You know, we had this money appropriated by city council towards the end of last year, before the end of the fiscal year budget. So by the time we got our list of streets together and then worked with National Grid, our priorities are always, always aligned, right? So, but, you know, they've been, I'm pretty understanding, they've, they've shifted some of their capital priorities around. So, so as they, as they move forward, then we can follow up and, you know, follow behind them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, please.
I believe we're going back to item A.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on obtaining a city solicitor, a city council solicitor, council vice president Roderick saying councilman Marado.
Mr. President, I don't know who wants to start, I know, I think all of us have had individual conversations about this. I think that at one point, a question was asked of our solicitor, Mike, who I have a lot of respect for. So what happens if, if there were a conflict between, an honest conflict or an honest disagreement between what we as a city council and the administrative office has and the mayor's office? And, you know, the answer was kind of, yeah, it'd be kind of a conflict of interest where you have to deal with it. So I think it's time to talk about the structure. The city has always had three solicitors. One, as I always understood it, one was kind of a full-time, although never really full full, but a full-time and two part-times. We entered into after this election with a plan that we would have just two, and there would be the main solicitor in Mike, and we would keep one assistant. And I don't know, it doesn't seem to be, I don't think it's working the way we had all hoped, and with, with the administrative offices and the mayor's feeling that, look, there's now a clear delineation in city government, which is new, based on the old form of government. And so it may be time for us to discuss, we as a city council have a solicitor that is more a council solicitor, if you will, lack of a better term. And the mayor's office has the city solicitor and protects the interests of the mayor. We have a solicitor that would be more concerned with council issues, helping us with ordinances, whether it be traffic appointees or, or other things. And if we've gone from three to two, there must be some money there that we can deal with. Now, knowing how budgets work, it probably isn't, I don't know, Mike, but, so I wanted to, and I know others, we've talked individually, we have not had any meetings on it, thought that it's time for discussion on if we've changed the form of government, then maybe we need to change our legal services as well. And it's kind of a, a quick thought that I had for putting this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mike. So I want to just say I agree with everything Councilman Roderick has said, but I also want to add to that. So we did, the city has budgeted for three solicitors, and as he's mentioned, one semi full-time and two part-time. And what, from my experience, I don't know, and I think most of us can speak and agree to what I'm going to say, the solicitor at the moment is contracted for 18 hours a week, correct? In fairness to Mike Marcello, I know that he has a lot on his plate, we see a lot of issues that come across this council that we deal with in executive session that we can't necessarily talk about, but we, we know what that is. And the 18 hours, I, I haven't looked at that documentation today, but I know that the 18 hours is a lot more than just 18 hours. And in fairness to this council, we have five members up here, and each and every one of us is trying to get things accomplished, whether it be resolutions or ordinances. And I feel, and no disrespect to you, Mike, I feel that we are not getting that level of service from a solicitor that we need. We have resolutions and ordinances that basically get backlog, and it's not fair to the council, and it's not fair to you that you have, you know, a lot on your plate as far as that goes. So I would like to figure out a way as to how we can implement the assistant solicitor, or maybe have a discussion on getting a entirely new solicitor, and how we go about doing that. I know that getting Dylan to work on behalf of the council would require a resolution that would, you know, request the council according to his letter of engagement in that resolution as to what those parameters are. I'd be happy to entertain and support that also, but either way, we, we definitely need someone that's dedicated to this council.
And just add to what you were saying, just so you understand, you said add another solicitor, it would be assistant solicitor, so we would have the solicitor, it would be assistant city solicitor.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So what I'm trying to say is that we can have a discussion on just having the assistant solicitor work on behalf of the council, so that way, he's focused on council needs, ordinances and resolutions. And I'm perfectly fine with that also.
No, I just want a clarification on that.
Yes, or, I mean, we are budgeted for a third solicitor too, and I'm also wanting to discuss that also.
Okay.
I have no issue with having the assistant solicitor work on behalf of the council. And if that's just a requirement of a resolution, then I'm fine with that also.
So a couple of options, one option would be to see what we can do to have the current assistant city solicitor sit at council meetings and represent us in a more direct way, or going back to hiring another, a third solicitor, which was the historical way that it was always done here. Three. Earlier, Mike, you said something about we were going to ask the assistant solicitor to do something, and you said it's not in his contract. Does he have a personal, or maybe you didn't say that, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, something to that effect you mentioned. Does he have a, Dylan Conley is who we're talking about, the assistant, does he have a personal contract with the city?
He gets an agreement for services, yes.
And that agreement prohibits him from working with-
So my best understanding, when we were both hired, that there was a concern that there were three city solicitors. They're budgeted for, the amount of money that is still budgeted is for, is the total amount of money that we're spending on, we went from three to two, but the money is the same because we're putting in more hours. Dylan has been assigned pretty much to do prosecutions in the district court and to do the municipal court and those kind of issues. I've been assigned to do everything else, that's how it's been working. The city solicitor under the charter is the sole person to be the advisor to the council and the mayor and all the departments of the city. If you want to, if the council wanted the assistant city solicitor to sit at council meetings, I guess they could certainly do that, but the charter would have to be amended as well. You can always have, you can always hire your own counsel for, when there's conflicts. Hasn't been, there hasn't been disagreements, there hasn't been legal conflicts that have arisen yet, that I'm aware of. That's a different issue than, and just so you know, if a legal conflict did arise between the mayor's office and the city council on a specific matter, I'm conflicted on both. So you'd have to hire someone for yourself, and then you'd have to, the mayor would have to hire someone for his, himself as well, because once you're conflicted, you conflict it out on both sides.
Do you consider yourself, and this is asked in a positive vein?
Yeah.
Do you consider yourself, your first allegiance to the mayor, and second is the council? And I would have no problem with that if that's the setup.
That's a very fair question, I get that question a lot. So my first allegiance is to the city and the city government. And I am obligated to represent and protect the interests of the city. That's what I'm sworn to do as a lawyer of the city. And so that's what I do. So when I put the brakes on the council from doing something, whether complying with the open meeting law or passing an ordinance that may not have legal effect or might, you know, constrain constitutional concerns that we may have, I'm protecting the interests of the city from future litigation. Same way with the mayor, when the mayor wants to do something that I believe is contrary to law, contrary to the charter, contrary to the ordinance, I'm protecting the interests of the city. So my allegiance is to the city, and that's, that's the role of a lawyer of any city. I mean, of course, I'm appointed by the mayor, approved by you, so, you know, obviously my office is in the mayor's office, but that doesn't mean that I'm, you know, of sole allegiance to the mayor. My allegiance is to the city. Lawyers are called, balls and strikes. That's what we do. We give you what we believe the law is, we give you our best opinion, you, sometimes you agree with it, sometimes you don't. And you had an example at the last council meeting where that didn't, where you disagreed with me and you went ahead anyway. That's fine, that's your right to do so, but I don't take it personally, that's just the way the job is. But my allegiance is to the city, to protect the interests of the city, to make sure that we're not stepping into litigation or, you know, violating someone's rights or- we're not stepping into litigation or, you know, violating someone's rights or, you know, personnel issues and all those, all of those kind of issues. That's basically what I'm trying to do.
So if this council said we wanted the assistant solicitor to, as part of his duties, to sit here at council meetings with us, is that something you would say can't be done?
Yeah, I think it could be done if you, if that's what you wanted, that's fine, yeah. But, but there's only one city solicitor, right?
Right.
So here's, here's the issue. If there's a disagreement between the solicitor and the assistant city solicitor, then that, that's an issue, but.
Well, I mean, I, I don't have personally any concerns with the city solicitor sitting here at the council meeting with us. I think the concern primarily is the, the workload. Uh, you know, if there needs to be any assistance to have, let's tap into the assistant city solicitor to assist with resolutions, ordinances, questions, concerns, whatever it may be. But I have no issue, and for the record, that the city solicitor remains with the council and sits up here with the council. But I think the issue, problem is, is some of the work that needs to be done, that if the solicitor's not getting to, and that's where we or he needs assistance, that, that work is done, so that work is completed for the council.
And that's up to the council, but I, I want to, one of the things that I was hired to do and to stop was the hiring of outside legal counsel and the bills that were going out from the city by the city solicitor, and prior solicitors hiring outside legal counsel. I can say assuredly, and Councilman Marado does have the, the printouts, that other than stuff that was already going on, we haven't hired outside counsel for any, let me repeat that, other than stuff that had been predated me, we haven't hired outside counsel. So when there's a grievance, when there's a labor issue, I'm handling that now. When we used to hire somebody, where there is a, you know, issue of a contract interpretation or a pension board issue, we're not hiring, you know, we're not hiring somebody, we're, it's here, I'm doing it. All the tax appeals, and frankly, that's one of the things that I'm concerned about because we have a lot of tax appeals that have been piling up, that was, used to be done by a third city solicitor, now that we have it, I think it taxes started today or soon to start, like, that's something that I'm going to have to be working on to get that. That's litigation, right? That's all, we, we used to give that out. We're not doing that anymore. So these things are very time-consuming, you know, and we have a couple of grievances that actually in court that, you know, take my time, a couple of things before the Human Rights Commission that's take some time. So, you know, am I here as often as I should be? As I always said, is, am I here as often as I would like to be? No, but I also, honestly, we have a limited budget, you know, and so, and I know, but anyway, so that's, that's my answer. So the goal was to stop the hiring of outside legal counsel. We have done that within the budget that has been given to us. So, and I think it has helped because we have one person, or maybe one or two people, now actually just controlling the whole litigation, so I have a better feel of what's going on and where the, where the pitfalls are. Where before, based upon only what I understood is, you know, no one really knew what was going on with the tax appeals, no one really knew what was going on with grievances, they were all in their own silos. You know, I, you know, my goal is really to prevent those grievances from coming, and I think we've been somewhat successful in doing that, but, you know, that's, but I just want to remind the council that that was the mandate from me given by the mayor, we don't want to hire outside counsel, and that has stopped. And you'll see, hopefully, within the next budget session, that that appropriation has been.
Yeah, it's a big thing, yeah.
So I got those numbers, but I haven't actually looked at them yet, you know, there's a lot of information there. But my, getting back to the reason that, the reasons why, part of the reason why we're having this conversation, it's the neglect that's, you know, I don't know if that's a good word, but neglect on the council side where we're trying to get, you know, resolutions or, and, uh, tweaking of resolutions and passing of ordinances where, as Councilwoman Souza has mentioned, that the, the resolution that we discussed with the police details, I feel that we do need a, another person such as Dylan to help us with, you know, those tasks, you know?
I'm sure Dylan's willing to help, as long as you pay him.
So the, and for that to happen, we would have to, for the next meeting, pass a resolution that would indicate, request a counsel according to his engagement letter with the city. That's how that would be done, correct?
Yeah, except that, I just want to be aware that his engagement letter is for a certain number of hours, and so you're going over those hours, and that was based upon the total budget that the city council had appropriated last time. So, you know, it's a possibility there that you're going to be over the appropriation for that department, because we took all the three lawyers, we, we took it three to two, we divided up that pool of money into two lawyers, and, you know, figured out how many hours he'd be spending, you know, on doing his, his prosecution stuff and how many hours I'd be spending on my other stuff, and, and that's where, so.
See, that, if I can interrupt you, Councilman, that, that's where my confusion comes in. We went from three to two. So why, why, why isn't it less money? Because we're being told that you're only 18 hours on the clock?
Well, generally, but.
And I, I know you probably go.
It goes over some weeks, you know, you know, it goes over.
How many hours is the assistant solicitor?
I, I don't, I mean, he's, I don't really know.
Must be less than you.
I, I don't, I can't say. Whatever it is, I mean, he goes to court for prosecution, so he could be in court for 10 hours, five hours, three hours, I don't know.
Wouldn't it be safe to say that the hours, the amount of hours that you would be spending on drafting resolutions and such, instead of paying you, we would be paying Dylan?
Again, but his, his total package was based upon the amount of money that was based upon, and you can, the, the total amount of that was appropriated, so we went from three to two, but the total amount of pool of money is the same, we just split up that money, and he, he gave us, he gave the mayor, his proposal as to what he thought he could do for that money that was available to him, and that does not include any extra drafting ordinances and what things.
We reduced the number of lawyers, but we didn't reduce the number of law work that we're, law work that we do.
Correct.
I make a motion, I don't know how we would proceed with this, that we look into a resolution to acquire Dylan.
Well, this is only out for discussion, so we can't make any motions of vote on anything at this point in time.
I don't know how, I don't know how the procedure would work with that, but my hope would be that.
Well, I think, you know, there's been some discussion, and it's either that we've received answers that we're satisfied with, or, or someone might want to put together for a vote, a resolution or an ordinance, or whatever it is. I don't know, at this point, you know, I still have a little confusion, but.
I might make.
The one thing I'm not confused at is, Mike, you've always responded to, to me when I've called, um, I, I think we've had some growing pains with some things going on between operation of law department, clerk's office, the council, you know, there are things that we're, we are tussling with a little bit. Other than that, it's, it's up to anybody else, and, you know, we leave it alone.
I could make the suggestion that you're just about to enter into a budget session, a new budget, and you can look at it, to me, it would be, make perfect sense to look at appropriations for, for the, um, the law department there. Again, as far as the traffic safety ordinance, I know that came up, but we've been working on it with Mark, but no council person up until recently has asked me to, to look into that. We've been trying to work it out on our own. You know, it's time-consuming, and your, your ordinances don't get drafted overnight. We've got to look at, and one thing that I'm, I stick with for, and the clerk will know this, is that I, when an ordinance is drafted or appointment is made, I make the appointing authority or make the, the person who's proposing the ordinance prove to me that they have the authority to make that ordinance and show me what the enabling legislation is. And so that takes extra time, where, and I think it's important because when I'm gone, I want people to be able to say, you know, that we were authorized to do what we did. There's no, and from my perspective, from the law department's perspective, I represent every city department without passion or prejudice. I don't have any problems with any city employee, any department. I'm there to provide a service, that's what lawyers do, you know, and I'm just there to, to do the job without passion or prejudice, and I try to do so. Could I do a better job at it, get more responsive? Yeah, but, I mean, there's only certain hours a day. For instance, 18 hours this week, I'm already spending, I've been here since 3:00 today, so 3:00, we'll get out at 10:00, so, I was here a little bit yesterday, so I could technically use up all my time right now at this meeting.
What would stop the council from increasing your 18 hours to 40 hours?
Money. Money, appropriation, yeah.
So, you know, we set the budget, right, so essentially nothing.
Doesn't have to be me, could be someone else, exactly.
I'm just, yeah, right, I mean, just taking that position and going from 18 to 40. I'm just trying to get a sense of what our options are as we're going into a budget season.
I think what we need to look at, it's what was budgeted for three solicitors, and what we have paid so far for two solicitors. I mean, you know, you don't have to be a mathematician to figure that out, and if the solicitor is getting paid the majority of what, if, if the budget for two solicitors is what we should be paying three solicitors, that's a clear indication that there's something not right there. And going back to what I said, that we are not getting that level of service that we need to accomplish our goals.
Yeah, I, I'll agree with that to a point, except, you know, it's not like contracting for a set amount of work, right? To Mike's point, one whopper, one doozy of a case, and we've blown our hours for the year. It's like the same thing we're talking about with DC, YF, and ESSA, right? You get one kid with high-end needs, moves into your district, fly by fly.
Tomorrow, I'll be at the zoning board hearing, which will be a long hearing. That's what I eat into the 18 hours a week. That's just, I mean, do I go over? Absolutely, I do, but some weeks I go under, so I try to average it out, but, meaning, in preparing our budget, I can tell you that our total legal budget is on track to be spending out what was, what was, what was allocated for legal services, so we, we didn't go over budget, which I think is a good thing. But again, there's, yeah, there's absolutely a lot of stuff going on, and there's only a certain amount of hours in a day.
I think it's fair to say that the council is looking for additional legal assistance anyway, volume-wise, right? Sounds like to me, but I think we're probably a pretty active council, so, you know, that's something we want to think about in budget time.
Well, I don't want to mention, I don't want to get off topic, but there have been, and we'll, we'll have these discussions as they come up on the docket item, there have been some issues that has been overlooked per se, and, uh, and we'll get into that when we get to that, but, and I'll, I'll show examples of maybe overworked or maybe too much on the plate, but that's not something to discuss for that, it's not on the docket right now, but I just want, everyone to keep that in mind.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to letter number C in Councilmember's communication.
That's preparation and submission of budget, East Providence City Charter, section 5-3, Councilman Marado.
So I put this on the docket because I, as we're going into budget season, I feel that this is one of the most important tasks we have as a, as councilmembers, and we're going to be voting on this budget, whatever budget's proposed soon, and I want to remind everyone of the charter provision, that's why I put that section on, right on the docket, that the mayor has, the mayor, at least 45 days prior to the beginning of each budget year, shall submit to the council a budget and an explanation budget message. If you look at 45 days, that takes us to the next council meeting, which is September 17th. And in preparation for that, I would, hopefully, maybe we can set some dates for special meetings if we can lay out some schedule so that we can tackle that. And I also want to mention to this council, and, and talking to different peoples in the public, and, you know, when they ask about if the taxes are going to go up and stuff, I started looking at the charter. I also want to remind everyone on this council that per charter provision 5-12-3, the budget should be finally adopted, not later than seven days before the end of the current fiscal year. Should the council take no final action on or prior to such day, the budget as submitted should be deemed to have been finally adopted by the council. That only takes us to October 24th. So we don't have a lot of time to, you know, go through each department as we planned at the beginning and really see how we can minimize tax rates or do our due diligence in saying, okay, if we do have to raise taxes, at least we can explain why, instead of rushing it through at the last minute. So if we could, if it's, if it's possible, anticipating that the budget will be given, presented to the council by the 17th per charter, if we can start putting down some dates that we all can agree to, you know, be here to have special meetings and whatnot.
Dates after the 17th.
After the 17th.
Right, we would need the presentation first and. Well, I mean, we did preliminary, take a, a budget from the police department and discuss it, and provided that it doesn't change, I don't think we're going to spend too much time on that. However, I think we need to really dabble into, you know, fire and DPW, because those are the next two biggest budget items that's going to be presented to us. So we can do it prior to the 17th and get probably another one or possibly two, and then, you know, come budget, when it's time to look at the, the actual numbers, we're not spending half the amount of time because we already done our due diligence, asked the questions that we should have, provided that the numbers don't change one way or the other.
Joey, what would we like to say?
Are we expecting the 17th to have a, Mike, do you know, or Mark, do you know, are we going to have a budget presentation on the 17th?
And if we are, we probably don't have a whole lot of room for a whole lot else.
Mr. Luba Luba?
So one of the other sections of the budget that I always have an eye on is the capital improvement, because that, that takes up a lot of the city finance too, and to see where the plan is, because that's essentially, I like to call it the wish list of each of the departments, in addition to what they're going to be asking for in their departments individually.
Hi. You will be presenting the budget on the 17th. The budget this year will be both written and it will be interactive with the Open Gov. So the workshops will be slightly different than prior, you just won't have a piece of paper, you'll see things on the screen, and, I mean, we're, we're working to pull that together right now.
You said we won't have a piece of paper?
Well, you, you will, we have both.
Okay.
It'll be on the screen, it'll be somewhere, it'll be interactive as this new system allows.
So the stuff that's up on the screen, will we have that all in paper too?
Yes.
Or would they be additional things?
There'll be additional things on the screen that you can dig deeper into, like usually there's a question on professional services, one line item, in departments, you'll be able to click on it and it'll show you what constitutes those professional services if, if they're significant.
Paul, do you know if we'll have, like, read-only access to it from, you know, be able to log in from home?
I believe you will be.
Okay. So. Because that would, that would, I don't know, I mean, that would aid at least my preparation and reduce the amount of time I need for meeting.
Yeah, you, you will be. That's the plan right now. So it'll, it'll be a lot of work, as Councilman Marado said, if you want to go through every department, and the capital certainly will be one of the larger items to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Looking forward to it.
Glad you're on.
Should we schedule bow some, or should we just?
I'm available every Tuesday.
My recommendation would be for the, the council to contact the city clerk through email with dates that they're available after the 17th, which she can post every date, that she can, you know, we can have a work session so that it's posted pre, and then if you have to cancel them, it's much easier to cancel than to post it, because you have to have 48 hours' notice anyway. So if you post a whole list now and then give supplemental notice 48 hours before those meetings, you'll be complying with the open means law, you'll have a lot more flexibility than just picking updates 48 hours, 48 hours at a time.
We, we could discuss it and not post it at this point in time to, to confirm that we're all on the same page for that specific date.
My only concern is that discussing dates for budget hearings is not on the agenda right now, you're just talking about the budget and the budget process.
Isn't that part of the budget process?
No, I mean.
Scheduling workshops?
Not really, he just cited the section of the budget.
We have to say on the docket, scheduling docket.
I believe you do.
We've not, I've never, I've not, we've done this before, and other councils have done this before. I think, I think, I mean, we did it last time when we scheduled the police, we did it right here, and there wasn't a question, it wasn't addressed at that point in time, so.
That's fine, I mean, I'm just giving you.
But I'm not saying that we need to post it because in event, like you said, that something comes up, but, and, and we've done in the past, we said, these are the dates because we cleared what everybody scheduled. So going into it, I know within the next couple of weeks, here's what I'm going to be doing on this specific day, this specific time, talking about a workshop for the budget.
I'm suggesting that you, you post a schedule of dates from the 17th on, what you might be meeting, that you tend to meet, to the extent that you don't need those dates, you can cancel them, but it gives everyone notice now what those dates are, and then you can, and then, because the clerk has to post not only those dates, but then give supplemental notice 40 hours before those dates. So if she knows what those dates are now, it's a lot easier for us to comply with the open means law and get the supplemental notice, because then the supplemental notice will have to tell us what budget you're going to be reviewing, whether it be police, fire, right now could just be a general date, we're going to hold these dates, and the supplemental notice will say what department you're going to be reviewing, and that's required.
Why don't we do this, Nate? You're free on, on Tuesdays?
Yes.
And the Tuesdays are sometimes conflicting with.
School committee.
School committee.
Yes.
Like, for me, I'm free any day of the week, like Wednesday or Thursday, with Wednesday work.
I guess who?
I guess it would be, I would have to, I'd have to go and look at the...
Just saying that, because it'll be safe that, you know...
So we can tentatively, right? Why don't we tentatively say a date and make sure that we can all, at least, for an example, if we were to say, next Wednesday, the eleventh. Now, if it's agree upon, we don't have to agree upon it, but we could tentatively say the eleventh of next week, provided that it works your schedule and everybody else's schedule.
You won't have the budget till the seventeenth.
But we can still discuss, if that's the direction we want to go in, or if we just prefer to wait until the seventeenth, I just...
I think we'd want to have the budget.
Okay. What are you going to... That's why. Without the budget.
Yeah, but they gave us, the police chief gave us a budget.
Right. So I, with the police...
And all the others are completely...
Yeah, with the police, I'm not really that concerned, because they kind of self, right, self-fund themselves, so to speak, with their Google money. They do, I mean, not that they don't ask, but they do a good job on their own. They're not something that I find we have a lot of difficulty with. But I think it's to Mike's point, let's just put some, you know, Tuesday, Wednesdays, the clerk can email us, hey, these are the days that are available, yea or nay, you know, individually back to her.
Okay.
Whether we approve, whether we're open or not for those dates.
Because your night schedule is probably going to be worse than everybody's.
Right.
Yours is going to be the most unpredictable, right?
Right. Tuesdays, Tuesdays, I block off, for the most part, for the whole month, because of the council meetings and any subsequent special meetings. I anticipate Tuesdays would be good days. But I can, as it stands for right now, Wednesdays for the next month are currently open.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Yeah. So if we could have dates, Madam Clerk, for Tuesdays and Wednesdays, following the budget proposal on the seventeenth, for regular council and special workshops regarding the budget, and then we can reply back...
Sure.
If those work for the council. And so the budget is submitted last approved, it's due on the twenty-second, right, or the twenty-fourth?
Seventeen.
Twenty-fourth. So you can't make any changes for seven, is it seven days?
Correct.
All right, so it would be officially the last week, so the last council, the council meeting before the due date is the fifteenth, so, so that would be, the fifteenth would be the last day we could make any changes or adopt the final budget.
And there's different rules on, you know, alerting the public of changes.
Sure.
So I think on the seventeenth, the finance director will come up and explain the whole process, and you have to, you know, post changes in the newspaper, and so it's, it's kind of regimented in that regard.
All right. So we're squared away with that? All set? Okay. Moving right along. Thank you, Mr. Luba.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Next item?
The next item is traffic speeding throughout the community. Council President Brito.
I put this on the docket, because I had it on before, and I like to combat this issue, the problem that we're having. It's an issue and problem that we have that is not going to go away. So we need to start really, start addressing this issue and how we're going to combat the speeding in this city. I continuously get calls regarding, you know, police requests for one street or another street. It's getting to the point, it's just, I don't even know how we're going to combat it, because it's just all over. And now with school back in session, you know, this is going to happen when kids are getting off the bus. So, you know, I know this was a thing in the past that we did not want, with speed bumps, portable speed bumps. There's the rubber ones they have in Providence that I've seen before, and the city doesn't like it. But I'm going to throw it out there now, just to start the conversation, just so people can start coming up with some ideas, and know there was discussion on cameras, whether it was in school zones or otherwise, you know, I don't care where they are, just, if we can just control the speeding that's in the city, I don't care what it is at this point in time, because I think we need to really start looking forward and addressing these issues, because no matter how we look at it, it's not going to go away. And I can have this discussion today, as I did several months ago, and I can be back out here six months from now, and people are still going to continue to call. So, you know, I've seen in Providence, the rubber mats, they're not bad-looking. They have them right on every street, where they're doing all the new development over there, and they're staggered from one side to the, one side to the other. And I know we can't have them on everybody's street, but if we start putting them somewhere or start doing something, whatever it may be, I welcome any ideas and suggestions at this point in time, from the public or otherwise.
Mr. President, if I may, you know, I'm talking with a resident who lives in Riverside. She brought to my attention this kind of, what they call this, traffic calming initiative, right, where they do it in a number of different communities. And they don't take such direct methods as, you know, increased police presence, or cameras, or speed bumps, but they'll do things like, they'll engineer, you know, elements into the landscape that kind of drive people to slow down, whether it's additional trees, or, you know, narrowing the roadways, or just things like that, right? And I know, I was kind of digging, as I was digging around through the budgets, as we're pairing up, I know, like Cumberland, Cumberland has appropriated money for a traffic calming initiative. I don't know what exactly they've done, or what they spent money on, but it might not hurt us to kind of look into some of these things and see, see how they're implemented, how they're working.
Yeah, I actually looked into Cumberland. I spoke to a patrolman in the division, in the division, a patrolman in the patrol division, and they do have a traffic calming program. And what it was explained to me is that, you know, they'll use like those pots and stuff, where they can, where it's safe, where it, you know, has the vehicles slow down, and it's, they have a really good program. But the thing I really liked, and I'm actually going to, I was actually looking into it for my department, they have, and I don't know if East Providence has this, I asked a few meetings ago about the traffic trailers, where you can deploy the traffic trailers themselves, but there's another product, and Cranston uses this, it's a box, and it has those tubes that go along the road. It's a data collection box. And what that box does, it collects speed, type of vehicles, being commercial or, you know, regular-sized vehicle, time of day, it puts all of that into a spreadsheet. So instead of having patrol go to those targeted areas that we can keep having complaints on, at hours of the day where it's not an issue, they can actually pinpoint and target exactly what the issue is, when, and what type of vehicle. Is there a commercial vehicle? Is it a, you know, a regular passenger vehicle? So that's something definitely worth looking into, and you could do a lot with that type of technology. Like I said, we have those traffic trailers, and you can deploy those also, reminds people of the speed, but it also collects data as far as how many vehicles and the speed, you know, the average speed of each vehicle. But I believe the other technology would be something worth looking into. And also, that traffic calming program initiative, it's also something worth looking into for every ward throughout the city, so...
Thank you, Councilmen. I just think, any suggestions, I think also, Councilwoman, what you had put in, Totten Avenue, the state laws stop those little, we have them on Center Street, and I know on North Broadway, and I see cars as they kind of speed down Center Street, they kind of slow down, because you see the taillights. Whether that works all along, I'm not sure, but I could say it does work for the most part, but anything at this point in time, because the problem's not going to go away.
I think to the point of the conversation is, we, during this budget season, have to allocate resources to it. That's, I mean, at the end of the day, we can have the ideas, but if we don't put any funding behind the ideas, then nobody's going to implement it, because they're going to look and say, well, where are we going to get the funding? That's the ultimate question. Where's the money coming from? So in the process, we're, I think it would be in our best interest, if that's one of our ideas for the city to improve the safety, which is something that, you know, I likewise have had multiple concerns about. I'm actually just following up with the Six Corners conversation again on forty-four, to see where that's going up at the State House, because we sent up a resolution, to see what the state, our General Assembly can do in terms of pushing a project or engineering in that section of the city to reduce the safety risks, because we don't even have crosswalks in some of those areas for the kids to cross to school, and a lot of children ride their bikes and walk home from school down Totten Avenue. So I think it's really important. I do like the idea, and I have seen in multiple communities, that is very efficient, is having a big flower pot in the middle, right in the intersection of the street. So you have your four corners, and then right in the middle is, you know, a potted plant or a tree, like a small island. So you have to stop, and then you have to go, almost like a miniature roundabout, you have to go around, so nobody's speeding through a stop sign, so that stops that, and you have to physically stop, or you're going to go through the tree or pot. I don't, again, it's not something we can put in every street intersection, but there are targeted areas, and I'm sure the chief and his patrolmen have data or can collect the data, and obviously, this technology can also collect the data, too, where our problem-target areas in the city are. And it might be a, you know, definitely a multiple-year plan, you know, this year we do roll something out and see how it goes, and much like the street paving project and sidewalks, we just kind of keep plugging along, every year doing a little bit more, till we get the end results that the community is looking for. So, thank you for continuing to bring that up, our Council President, because I agree it's an ongoing issue that we want the community to know. We understand, we hear your calls, your text messages, your emails, and we are actively thinking about it and trying to address it.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you all. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance pertaining to Section 2-9 entitled Powers, Item Seven of the Charter, Councilmember Marado and Councilwoman Souza.
Here we are again, same discussion, different channel, though. So this past week, as I was looking at a rebuttal, or whatever you want to call it, for an MOU that has been submitted by the mayor's office, I came upon Section 2-9 of Council Powers that we keep referring to the Paragraph Six, the inquiry into. But it dawned on me that the very next paragraph, Paragraph Seven, which states, "The council has a power, under Council Powers, adopt ordinances for the government of the city which have to do with records, franchises, finance, personnel, civil service or merit system, pensions and retirement system, public works, public safety, public welfare, public health, city planning, zoning, parks and playgrounds, and a safe and sanitary housing, public utilities and other municipality functions, not in conflict with the Constitution and laws of the state." So I'm looking at that, and I read that as, "The council has the ability to pass ordinances for the government of the city, which includes personnel." And then you look further down in Section 2-10, "Council not to interfere in appointments or removal by mayor." Part of that paragraph states, "Except for the purpose of inquiry, and council and its members shall deal with the administrative services." That paragraph does not include the mayor's office. Mayor's office is not included in that paragraph. So the point I'm trying to get to is this. There's a, on the Chapter Two, which deals with council powers, correct? Clerk, Madam Clerk?
What was it again?
Chapter Two.
Oh, yes.
There's a, what I would like to propose in an ordinance is the following language. "The council may inquire regarding governance of the city which have to do with records, franchises, finance, personnel, civil service, or merit system, pensions and retirement system, public works, public safety, public welfare, public health, city planning, zoning, parks and playgrounds, and safe and sanitary housing, public utilities, as well as other municipality, municipal functions, and whenever the council requests, the mayor shall make available at a meeting of the city council any such personnel whose regular job duties are relevant to the council's inquiry." I also want to add that council requests should be submitted no later than two days prior to the posting of the docket. The way I see this, I don't see any reason why we, as a council, do not have the ability to pass such ordinance under that charter provision that I mentioned. And I also want to add this fact that, this dawned on me, we're constantly being told that we cannot have the communications with the apartment heads unless we go through the mayor. But it dawned on me that each and every one of us here are on either a liaison, a voting member or such, to boards and commissions, and we deal directly with apartment heads in those boards and commissions. There's nothing precluding us from doing that. The pension, Police and Pension Board that I'm on, I can ask direct questions to the police chief, fire chief, union president, without any repercussions whatsoever. So I just want to keep, I want everyone to keep that in mind, that nothing prevents us from doing that. So, under this part of the charter, which I kind of, I think I had an aha moment, the way I read that, I don't see any reason why an ordinance can be proposed, as I described. And this would resolve the issue with MOUs and special ballots and everything else that we've discussed for months thus far. So what I'm going to propose, I'm going to do is propose, have a draft ordinance for the next council meeting for First Passage with that language.
I'm not, I got this ordinance on Friday, Thursday, from the council person, from the city clerk. I'm not sure that the councilman's reading of the charter is correct. I don't believe, I don't really know what he's trying to say, or what, how is Section 2.10 relates to 2.9? So I'd have to look at that carefully. If he wants to come in to talk to me about the ordinance, I'm more than happy to help him try to draft something, but the way that was written to me, it's almost duplicative of already powers that the council already has, but...
I think, I think, what I understood from what he said was, because the council has the powers to make ordinances related to those enumerated items, the council has, thereby has the power to require those who know about those items to come and inform us about. Is that, or is that not, the essence of your ordinance that you just read?
Correct. And to reiterate that charter provision, the 2-10, we are not directing, we are not ordering or directing department heads, we are making those requests through the mayor's office to make available, which in 2-10 does not, the mayor's not included in that, in the 2-10. But the way I read that charter provision, 2-9, Paragraph Seven, we have the ability to adopt ordinances in every single one of those categories, and personnel includes those categories.
Yeah.
But keeping in mind that we are not, we are not ordering them directly, we are not, we are just for the purpose of governance, requesting that they are in attendance to discuss those items, which, as I stated, whose regular job duties are relevant to the council's inquiry. And I will be happy to sit down with you in the near future to discuss this.
It'd be great.
All right, very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
It looks like we completed...
Moving right on to B, where are we? First Passage for Vote Ordinances.
That's correct. First Passage for Vote is an ordinance, an amendment of Chapter Eighteen of the Revised Ordinances of the City of East Providence, nineteen eighty-seven, as amended, entitled Vehicles and Traffic. And this is sponsored by Councilman Kahoon.
And, Mike, when I sent this ordinance to you, I'm sorry, I didn't know how to do it, which is why I sent you a list of like four hundred intersections to begin with, with this intersection, the ordinance one. So it basically is just a request to add two stop signs down over in Ward Three, one on Moicet, one on Allerton, with the cross street of Bradford, for both of those. So where both of those streets intersect with Bradford Avenue, looking to put in a four-way stop sign down. If you're familiar with that neighborhood in Kent Heights, it's on the back of the hill behind the water tower.
But we did, it's here. You have the ordinance.
You know, no, it is, but the way I sent it in with everything, and you, right, sent back kind of the common sense...
I get it.
Okay. Which is what I thought.
I understood your purpose, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's, that's really all that is, too, it's two stop signs.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I will make that motion. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, second it, and a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Murato.
Aye.
May I ask one quick question now that we've done first passage? When it comes time for second passage, do we have to advertise the changing of the ordinance in the paper?
Yes. Not as extensive as it did.
There's gonna be a stop sign over there.
Say it again?
We have to advertise there's gonna be a stop sign.
There'll be change to that ordinance, adding two stop signs to that, yeah. It's required by the charter.
How much does that cost us?
Seventy-five dollars each week. You have to cycle it twice, so it's $150.
And that's a state law?
No, it's charter.
It's a municipal.
Oh, it's charter. Oh, we look at that charter.
The only time that you would have to, the only time that you have to actually advertise, unless it's else, I mean, we set it as a municipal law that we have to advertise every single ordinance change. The only time you're actually required to by the state is if it affects the state law. Is that right?
Depends, but generally zoning ordinances have to be advertised by state law, required. Certain state laws have to be, zoning changes have to be advertised by state law. We have our own provision that ordinances have to be advertised. So, if you're looking to change the charter, you might want to change that.
Well, I'm gonna ask the voting public, if you've got locations where you're looking at stop signs, please let me know now, so we can like get them all done in one.
We can hold them off.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right, very good. Next item, please.
Next item is an ordinance for first passage, an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 3 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Animals, Article 1, sponsored by Council President Murato.
Michael, most ordinance in this city, they need to be updated, so I asked the animal control officer, Muggles, to review this, to update it, and he went over, I won't say beyond, but he went, and he went through the entire ordinance, actually. And because of the magnitude, the size of it, that we had to break it down into two phases here. So this is just one of two phases. So I'll be seeking passage with any questions, concerns, or any amendments that we need to do for this one. And then we'll be also introducing another one, the second half of this as well. And essentially, this ordinance makes some minor changes, such as city manager to manager introduces the inspections for kennels, goes on to realign it with the state law as well. Then there's some changes, such as the animal pound versus animal shelter. And then, more importantly, that I look at with this as well as transferring from DPW to the police department.
Back to them, yeah.
Back to them. And I know, Councilwoman, you have some questions regarding this, and if anybody does.
Can I just, before, I just wanted, if you don't mind, one of the things that I did, we went through and we updated, Rhode Island state law has changed in animal control and animal cruelty, animal statutes, and they updated a lot of their definitions, like the definition of tether was changed, definition of adequate water. So by changing, you'll see in this ordinance that we conformed our ordinance to the new state law. I just want to point out that this was an extensive work, and this was probably a six-month project, because what happened was, when we got it back from, and it's not every ordinance is done, it's usually from Mark or someone from other department head, they propose it. This was much thicker than what it was here. He had licenses in there for dog walkers, for pet grooming, for other things like that.
Cropping of the ears.
Cropping of the ears. I then looked at that, and he doesn't, he's not a lawyer, and I don't blame him, but he thought he could do it. Animals are one of the things that were strictly controlled by the state. So you have to have enabling legislation for us to license dog walkers. We don't, there's no such, there's no such enabling legislation. So I had to take all that out. So he had, it was all interwoven, we had to take all that out. So there was a lot of things that were taken out of this that you didn't see. I know that you did see a draft that was much greater than this. But that's the kind of process that we use, just so you understand what we do. Anybody can propose an ordinance, but it's the research that goes behind it that the law department mandates, under my control, that we find out, if you're gonna change an ordinance, you gotta, you gotta show me where the law is that you're, that you're reeling on to get it done. So this was primarily this, what this, primarily what this does is update our definitional section to match state law, cruelty of the animal statutes, which were recently done.
And then in addition to this, this was submitted to the head of SPCA as well.
Right. We did that, I did that as a check, yeah.
And so he had the opportunity to review this, and his questions and concerns to me was at that time, was about the dog cropping.
Right, was not permitted.
But everything else was, he was right, he was satisfied with everything else in here as well.
So the requirement, the requirement to have the building inspector inspect kennels, that's in accordance with state law?
No, that's, that's exercising the police power of the city. So it's, you know, we have a right to inspect any building, basically. So it just gives the authority to him as well as to the building official.
Okay.
So that was something that he came up on his own.
And again, if there's something on here, please let me know. We can have a discussion on it, we can omit it, we can add, so.
I was surprised to find that there's actual city, like, ordinance behind, like, not owning cobras and, like, chimpanzees. I would have figured that that was just common sense. It turns out that you can't really do it.
He did, he did put minimum standards for the dog pound, that was new, that you're, so you're, you're limiting, no, you're limiting, but you're establishing by law that the dog pound has to meet certain minimum standards. And that's something that you're just doing as a part of your police power. No state law requires you to do that, but he's going beyond, beyond, beyond that, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So, some things after going through, one, and I can't find it now, but there is somewhere in this 18-page first part ordinance, that the city manager didn't get changed to mayor. So, for the record, when I'm making this first passage, anywhere that it says city manager, make it manager, uh, mayor. So some of the things that came to mind after reading this and having spoken with people who are, you know, animal activists, and work with, you know, ASPA and all the different agencies, one of the things that I think we should add, that I didn't see on here, is considering that owners not, may not leash any animal to a fixed structure, like a fence, a tree, a pole, a post.
I think, isn't, I thought it was in there.
Definition of tether.
That's, that's in there, right?
Well, it's a definition, but not...
Then it says you can't, then it tells you what you can.
Yeah.
Then it tells you what a leash could be.
And it goes on.
Right, but I'm saying that it's, an animal shouldn't be, like, for instance, in people's backyards, you can't have your dog tied up to a chain in your backyard all day long, unsupervised. They should only be leashed, and I use that word because it's one of the definitions that were revised. They can only be leashed for the amount of time that they take to relieve themselves. And then they have to be unleashed, you know, brought back into the home or wherever. They can't just be outside in the heat tied up all day long, or in the cold for that matter, all day long. I think that's important because that pertains to animal care and reducing animal cruelty, because I think, you know, in certain situations, they're out there all day, maybe with no food, no water, and I understand that that's already in here, but if they're roaming free in their backyard, they can maybe eat grass or, I don't know, find a puddle from somebody's sprinkler as opposed to being tied. The other one is regards to penalties and violations. I know we have some, you know, pretty minimal first offense, second offense, third offense violations, and then they can go before the courts. I'd like to see where, you know, if somebody has been, has violated somewhere on here that was kind of heinous to an animal, animal cruelty, that the judge would have the option to fine them. They wouldn't be able to have another animal, maybe not just the up to one year, but I would say even more so, five years, or indefinitely if the case.
Yeah, that was in the original ordinance that was drafted, but we don't have, this would be enforced by our municipal court. Our judges don't have that authority to do, set such limits.
But the judge would have the authority to not allow a license to be issued, right? So we have to license our dogs in the city of East Providence. The judge could say, "No more licenses for you for six months, year, whatever."
Well, that's what I mean, for like a year, two years, or if a situation was so heinous, you're not allowed to even have a dog license.
That would be, that wouldn't be the jurisdiction of our court, that would be jurisdiction for the district court. I don't, we wouldn't have that jurisdiction.
No.
We can only set monetary penalties.
So what requires us, like, our license ordinance for the dogs, right? I mean, that's something that just basically flows down from a state law?
There's an enabling legislation that allows cities in town to license animals, dogs, and it sets the maximum fees.
Okay. All right. Fair enough.
That's a typical example of where we thought we had the power to do so.
Yeah.
But upon further research, we do not, so.
So they can continue us, okay.
No, they can be charged in a district court, they can be charged in municipal court.
Right, but our municipal court would take them in charge, right, without the city.
No, the police department would take them in charge, charge them in district court.
Right, exactly, okay.
But to the councilwoman's point, I mean, even if we can flag that somewhere, if we can't do that, then flag them in the system.
Right.
That it will be brought, say, to the police department and let them deal with it from that point on, or something to that nature.
And that is, that is done. I did have a case where we had someone where it was cropping ears. Instead of bringing it here, we brought them to district court.
So where can we, so how do we, how do we fit that into this?
I mean, that's just the discretion of the officer.
The law, yeah, it's law.
That's what the law, they know.
Yeah. Okay. And then the disposition of animals. I personally, I know, and I've had this personally, not personally for me, but a constituent of mine who had an issue who could no longer physically or mentally take care of an animal, and the dog officer came and removed the animal from the home, and then the home was in the pound, and then subsequently the owner, right, doesn't come back, and that's in the orders, if they don't come back, they can humanely destroy the animal. I don't think that the City of East Providence should be in the business of humanely destroying any animal unless they are rabid or have some vendicious, you know, attitude where they have done something heinous to the animal towards somebody else, in a sense of, you know, like we had happen in a neighboring town in Massachusetts. I think there are many outlets for people to adopt animals, and I think that that should be the priority of our, you know, dog pound or our dog officer and the agencies in the city, is to try to place it either within our community, in other communities throughout the state. I'm not a fan of where it says, well, if there's not an available cage or crate or living environment, then we just have to get rid of the animal and dispose of it, as opposed to, let's maybe transfer it to a different shelter that has maybe more room, and there's maybe a better population of people looking. Because I know when we come to the One in East Providence, they're a great facility for people to come and look, and that's where I rescued two of my animals. Sometimes you go in, it's not, you know, you don't see anything that just, you know, that you get attached to, and so you go to a neighboring town, and you might have found something somewhere else. So, you know, what's good for one is good for another, and if we just move them around and go foster them, I mean, some people foster them, there are many options. I'm not in the, I don't think the city should be, and I wouldn't support trying to, to humanely destroy any animal unless it was rabid or had some vendicious behavior.
But it's a policy decision, but obviously there's a cost with that, and that's what you have to balance. If you're not gonna have to kill animals, euthanize them for whatever reason, and there are limits here, that limits when the dog officer can do so. But that's just, if you want to make East Providence a no-kill shelter, then that's fine, you're gonna have to fund it, however, and find out the money to fund, fund something like that. That's, it's a policy decision that's been debated in cities and towns across the state. I think Mr. Muggles has a fair compromise here, but I'm not a policymaker, you are, so this is Section 3.26. If you wanted to strike that, huh? B, I think, oh, A and B.
B, yeah.
A and B, mostly B. But that's, that's something you'll have to decide as, as a council. That's a policy decision.
That's my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it.
Well, I gotta, I have a way, we like to proceed with this as a council. My ears are wide open.
Speaking to what Councilwoman Souza said, is there any way that we can look at those, like, the criterias for euthanizing an animal? It seems to me that that provision doesn't exactly satisfy what she's speaking of, like not having a crate, or...
Well, basically, according to that, you know, let's say it's a dog, the dog's in there for long enough and nobody comes to get the dog, then the dog is euthanized. So, and that's, that's really the only, you know, and then there's, you know, there's provisions in there where, you know, a responding officer can put the dog down if, you know, it's a danger to the officer or somebody else. I certainly wouldn't want to get in the way of that, right? I mean, obviously, that's, that's, that's a, that's a mess. You don't want to stop somebody from defending themselves. But I think to Councilwoman Souza's point, I'm not all that, I mean, I'm a dog nut, right? And I'm not all that crazy about the idea of something getting killed just because it's inconvenient.
You might want to, it's up to you, but you might want to have Sergeant Muggle, I don't know what's rank, but ACL Officer Muggles come in. I don't think he, I think he goes beyond, beyond before a dog is euthanized. I would imagine that you have, very rare that you have.
I thought it was gonna be a ton of action.
I don't, I don't, I hope I don't mean to, I don't mean to sound.
No, 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 no.
Being at all, you know, reckless about it.
I would be curious to know, and I think he'd be, he'd be the only person to answer these questions, right?
Before we go on any further right now, if we could just have a motion to extend the meeting an additional 15 minutes, we're at the 10 o'clock mark.
Someone, so.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Anyone want to pause? Okay, so.
The president's received first passage anyway, right?
This is my first passage.
So we could pass this and then submit changes and amend it.
But then it would have to keep, it would have to go for another first passage. Anytime you change something after the first passage.
Yeah, but are we gonna change it tonight? I don't know.
Well, it could be here for discussion, and then it'd be on tomorrow, like, the next meeting, you know.
We could table for another first reading if you wanted to.
I'd be curious to know if there's any efforts by our animal shelter to transfer those animals to no-kill shelters. I adopted my dog from a kill shelter that was transferred to Bristol, you know, so I understand that concept. I'd be interested to know what the cost-effectiveness is as to, you know, euthanizing versus not euthanizing. I think there's a lot of questions that could be answered.
Well, Tom, you're not, you're not gonna get that tonight.
Not tonight, Bob. Officer Muggles should be at this next meeting.
Well, I think, I mean, I can probably answer, you know, from a conversation I've had with just a vet, it's, you know, my animal needed emergency surgery, and I was kind of up in the air because it's expensive, you know, animals, you take care of them like you take care of yourself, and they cost just as much as you do. And he said, "Well, you know, it's easier just to euthanize them," which I didn't see that coming from a veterinarian. But, you know, he was being serious, like, you know, if you're not looking to spend too much money, if it's a burden, and that's kind of what this portion of the, the section of the ordinance is, if it becomes a burden to the city financially, you know, we're paying for food, we're paying for, whatever the expenses are, it's gonna be cheaper to just euthanize. But personally, I just think maybe.
This is a first resort, almost.
Yeah, right. I think it's almost, it gives, well, it gives them the option for it to be the first resort.
Yes.
If they don't want to put the work in or get inundated with a lot of things. I just think if you advertise and publicize, I mean, there's so many animal lovers that will just foster. But I'll end it at that, so.
Do you have any, any other questions or concern? And if not, can we table this for the?
Can we table the whole thing for the next?
Well, not the whole thing, I just think, just the ones that, to address the concern, which was Section 2-26, disposition of animals, Section B.
We're gonna pass it, it's up for 3-26.
Correct.
Yes. Yes.
And what about the section about leashing?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
What did you guys think about that section about not having an animal tied up, you know, for a longer majority of the day than necessary for them to take care of themselves?
I'd like to look at that, because I remember in the legislature, we did have a provision like that, but I don't, and to enable, but I don't think it ever passed, so I don't know if we have the authority to do that under state law, so I'd have to look at your language.
Well, doesn't, doesn't city have its own, I mean, we have our own, not, we can't, we're self-governing in what, where we can make things additional.
Except for licenses of animals, this is all under licensing of animals, this is...
Okay. Oh, much like school?
Exactly, licenses and care of animals.
All right, so I move to pass for first passage, except for Section 3-24, minimum care of animals, and Section 3-26, disposition of animals. I'm sure this kind of interlocks with other parts.
That's right, we can figure it out.
But...
Okay. So in that move, that motion is, you know, pending further discussion on those items, right?
Correct.
So, just, so we're excluding 3.24.
Correct.
And 3.26, or 3, 26, and everything else can be passed, everything else passes. Well, some of these are not, some of these are not changes, some of, we'll just advertise the changes that were made. Some of these, I just gave you the whole ordinance, so you have a chance to look at the whole thing.
Well, disposition 26 isn't a change, it's just been moved, relabeled.
No.
And we're adding. And we're adding.
Excuse me, with the exception of B and C.
B and C, the council president, yeah.
So then I'll second Councilwoman Souza's.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve with the exception of section 2-24 and section 2-26.
Three.
Three, right, three.
Excuse me, 3-26 for further discussion during the next council meeting. And we have a motion by Councilwoman Souza, second, Councilman Cahoon, we'll call both, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brutto.
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is resolutions to request items through the mayor's office, solicitor interpretation, Councilman Morato.
I want to make this very brief, so I did get a, an email from the solicitor, Mike Marcello, regards to my inquiry as to passing a resolution, requesting the mayor to, like, and that whole conversation, as we all know, came from the wire drop. The one thing I did find interesting was the conclusion, for the reason, reasons noted above, the city council can impose additional duties on the mayor through the passage of an ordinance subject to other limitations in the charter. A resolution, however, be ineffective for the same purpose. And it goes back to the, the 2-9 language that we talked about, that I still see, that strengthens my position that we have a right through ordinance to get those tasks done, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
That'll be it, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone got a copy of that, this email?
Got a copy.
Very good, moving right along.
Next item is new business reports of other city officials, mayoral communications, Mark Fertato.
Just need, just need a second. Just one, Councilman.
Sure. So the first item that's under communications is the National Grid additional roadwork, I'll skip that just because Steve said way more than I ever could, but.
Before you move on, can I just ask you a question, Mark? So I did send an communication to the mayor's office regarding an updated list from National Grid as it pertains to Ward 2. I know when we, the council set the budget to do the roadwork, we had discussed about getting the National Grid on board with their plan, and I'm just wondering where specifically Ward 2 is with, in terms of coordinating any work that needs to be done with National Grid along with the streets that need to be redone in Ward 2. So I know the mayor said he was gonna look into it, I just didn't know if you were made aware of it or if you had any additional.
Not, I haven't been told anything about it, at least recently, but I'll look into it.
Okay, yeah, I just would like to see, you know, what the National Grid's projected, you know, next two years or three, I think there's three years left in the agreement that we had set for the roadwork, if they could give me maybe the next two years of roadwork that National Grid has planned for Ward 2. Please and thank you.
Okay, and the second item is just a notification that we're, we've started a firefighter recruitment for this year, it's the firefighter EMT position, it pays 54, 54,390 to 64,976, it's the starting The application period started on August 22nd, and it goes through until October 31st, and the deadline is that day at noon. The minimum requirements are that the applicant must be 21 years of age by the October 31st They must be a U.S. citizen, they have to furnish a copy of a valid driver's license, must possess a high school diploma, OGED, have a successful completion of the Rhode Island Association of Fire Chiefs Physical Performance Assessment by October 31st, but the certifications from October 2018 and April 2019 will be accepted, and they must be able to obtain a Rhode Island Emergency Medical Technician Basic Certification by the start of the academy, which would be in March of 2020. The examination weight is going to be 60% written and 40% oral, and the minimum passing score for both of those is 70 points, and for anyone that is interested in applying, they can apply online at www.firefighterapp.com, or they can contact the Human Resources Department. And then the third item is just a follow-up letter from the mayor to the council regarding the MOU that was discussed, and I've given it to all of you, both the revised version and the letter. I'm not gonna read the entire thing, but just notes the timeline of events, starting from the meeting on July 31st, the agreement in principle that was made, the procedure on the initial MOU, and then at the previous, the emails from Councilman Morato, and I believe there's an attached portion of that email on there, or, I'm sorry, a quote, about the deletions of, it was the original paragraphs 1, 2, 4, and a heavy edit of 3. But then also at the, citing the updates from the previous council meeting, and that was two amendments, I know there are a lot that were discussed, but there were, I went back, there were two that were proposed and agreed by both parties, so I amended the MOU to reflect that before that was sent back, so. And that's here before you, I mean, the, the choice obviously is yours, I know you voted for the special election that officially has gone through, I know canvassing has that, that's in the process. Think the deadline is the 12th, right? But.
12th of?
September.
To do.
They have to certify the question.
So if we have other questions to put on there?
You have time.
Okay.
Unless you have special meetings.
I'm not gonna beat this to death, but looking at what I found in the charter and, you know, I find, I have, I feel that that is the, I have, we have a right to go that avenue. You can speak about this any way you all you want, but there's a lot of inconsistencies as to what we discussed. In fact, paragraph one about, let me finish, paragraph one.
It's a point of border.
Excuse me?
This is a point of border, this is mayoral communications.
Okay, and since we're on the mayoral communications, keeping with, you know, section 5 of miscellaneous provisions, I would like all mayoral communications to be forwarded to the council with the council docket, since we're gonna follow the rules, and it's right there in that provision, on the, on the B, moving forward. Now, I'll make that a point from now on also.
Mr. President, I need to clear up this thing about the special election, are we saying there's no recourse that this is on? I thought we were gonna try to accomplish, I mean, our goal here is to be able to deal with department heads at council meetings, for the most part, right? I mean, we heard Mr. Kudus say tonight, we can direct constituents to call his office if there's a question, so that was said publicly, it's on the record, I appreciate that we could do that, you know, for things like paving, streets and potholes, not gonna send residents to him on policy matters. Was the date I heard, September 12th?
So, you took action at the last council meeting
Yeah.
to call for a charter amendment. That charter amendment is valid, it's passed by the council, it has to now be certified by the local board of elections, they're waiting for, for me, my office to, to come up with a question, the language of the charter amendment, and I was told they want that by September 6th, which is Friday, because they're calling a meeting of the board of canvases for, I believe, September 12th. They have to certify that question 50 days before the election, I believe that's September 12th. So we're moving forward because that's what the council asked us to do. If you want to change that now, then you're gonna have to have a special meeting some between now and September 12th, rescinding your charter amendment. But I, I, I don't get to call, I don't get to choose whether or not I go forward or not, you guys pass the ordinance, it's my job now to make sure that that charter amendment is, hits, hits the process that you guys have chosen. So I've been dealing with the board of canvases, they gave me the deadline that they need the question by, so they can call their own meeting, and that's what's going to happen next, so.
So what, at any point, regardless, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna go through these steps, but at any point, this council can vote to rescind that?
Well, you have to understand, there's, there's costs involved with this, so we've already, the state is waiting, they're gonna be printing a ballot, they're gonna be sending it out to get a ballot question specific for East Providence, and, you know, they've already, I guess, reserved, the whole part, purpose of certification is they reserve those machines for East Providence, so I don't know the intricacies of what happens at the state board of elections, but right now, we're on a path towards a special election. At what point is the point of no return? I really can't answer that question, all I know is the point of return, which is 50 days before the election, that question has to be sent to the board of elections. What they do once they get that question, I have no idea. That's not my, that's not my role, and that's what they handle, they're just waiting for the local board. So, but it's not my, I want to understand, it's not my role to tell you not to go forward. I have to go forward because that's what you instruct, that's what the council acted, and so I'm going forward. I don't know what's happening behind the scenes, I don't know if you're having discussions with the mayor, I don't know the MOU, I don't know about the ordinance changes that you're proposing, I'm going forward because that's what I have to do to meet the deadlines that you have set.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Any other, any further questions?
So I, I guess mostly this was just to get a feel, I know how Councilman Morato feels, but I guess to get a feel from the rest of the council in regards to the revised MOU. I, I got feedback from Councilman Cahoon and Councilman Roderick, we spoke today on it, but just.
But isn't it, isn't it a moot point? If, if this election, special election, which I really am not thrilled about having, you know, of $15,000 expense to the community, when we're looking about possibly adding some money to the legal department, some other ordinances we talked about tonight, traffic and other things, that are gonna cost money, if, I was hoping that would be our last resort, if we weren't happy with an MOU and the mayor's, as I, as you mentioned, I stopped by today, I was getting my email fixed, and I did speak with the mayor, and I said, look, we just, we want to be able to have access to department heads at meetings, and, you know, what's the big deal? And he's telling me, well, I, I agree with that, as long as the questions, you know, we've talked about this, we, we agree to send the questions ahead of time, we, we know there's been a lot of problems up to this point, but is the answer to have a special election, which we know if, if we see 1,200 people come out, we're gonna be lucky, and there's a cost factor. I, I don't know, how do we feel about this? I'll, I'll go along with an election if this is totally not.
Well, I guess we're gonna have a little bit more extensive talk on this, so the problem I have is this, we never should have gotten to this point.
Correct.
We should have had access to department heads right from the beginning, seems like we're paying for the sins of past council members, okay, which is unfair to this council, and we were never given that opportunity legitimately. Well, there's, there's, these MOUs, and we, we talked about, you know, MOUs and such for lengthy times, maybe we can resolve it with that. You know, we talk about, you know, a form that should be made, made available completely in its entirety, I, I got one form one time, but it nowhere reflects, which, trust me, I don't want the language in the MOU, because it's short of, you know, just giving a blood sample to get a department head to come up here, but this is a form that was provided, completely not what is described in that. I have a real issue with the members of the administrative service, that could be Mark Fertato every time we have a question, and, and I want to say this right now publicly, the information that was in the discussion earlier about whether or not your issue with the civilians being, you know.
Traffic control.
And if the retirees are on the contract, that's, it was, it was misinterpreted, they are in fact in the police union contract. So I want the answers from the person who is relevant to that topic. We have a dog ordinance, a conversation, we should get the answers from that dog officer who works day to day and knows the ins and outs.
Yeah.
Okay? If we have a problem.
Yes, Councilman, but that's a member of an administrative service.
I'm not done yet. Point of all.
Hold on, Mr. Fertato.
So, you know, it's the same thing, we keep banging our heads up against the wall with the same, we keep going around the same circle. This MOU is, no disrespect to you, Nate, is not completely what we discussed, I've, I've, I've asked for certain language that I would like to see in there, I got laughed at by the mayor to, the last meeting, when I wanted to delete sections, whatever, 2 and 3. So looking at this new ordinance provision, correction, provision in the charter, I believe we have a right to go a completely different avenue, where we don't have to do MOUs, and we have a right to pass an ordinance that straightens this once and for all, so. And as far as that goes, we can rescind, perhaps you should look into when the absolute deadline is for the city to rescind that, if we need to go in that route.
So let me ask you, Councilman Morato, if you were to draw up the conversation for the MOU, would you be satisfied with that, provided that it's in agreement with all?
What I would like to do is, I don't even want, I would, I'm so entertaining the MOU, but I need to know this, this ordinance, go in that route.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? What I'm saying about this MOU, what I have proposed, doesn't even get looked at or considered, okay? It's just, it's a one, it's a one-sided basic negotiations to this MOU, and it's only coming from the third floor.
Mr. City Solicitor, how soon can you look into that ordinance that the councilman is referencing?
As soon as he makes an appointment, I have, I'll be, I got his drawing board tomorrow night, so I'll be, I think I got a meeting at 3 o'clock, so maybe by Wednesday, but I don't want to, I don't, you know, that's his interpretation of the ordinance.
By Wednesday of tomorrow or next week?
I'm sorry, I forget today's Wednesday.
No, tell us Tuesday.
I forget tomorrow's Wednesday, it's probably Thursday, because I got, I got.
So would it be fair to say Friday?
Thursday or Friday, it's fine.
Okay, so.
But can I just, can I just, I want to warn, because I don't, again, I'm just seeing this for the first time, that's the councilman's interpretation of the charter. With all due respect, he's not a lawyer, and he, and he, he may be wrong, he just may absolutely be wrong, he may propose anything, but he still may be wrong, I don't know.
So will, will Friday give you enough time to sit down and talk?
At least get the idea.
Have the idea as to what's going on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so is that okay with you, Councilman Morato?
I'll be here at 4 o'clock on Friday, actually, correction, Friday won't work for me, there's any other day before Friday.
Hold on.
Wedding at the.
Just so we can square this away right now. And on the flip side of all this, Mr. Fertato, I think it's your birthday today, on a lighter note.
What a way to.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. 4 o'clock on a Thursday?
Uh, one second. I would like to resolve this sooner than later.
While he's checking his calendar.
4 o'clock works.
I'm sorry, okay, so 4 o'clock Thursday, that way you can look into this.
Again, just so, just so I'm clear, I, I get it. He may, I may say what you want to do is still violate to the charter, he may go forward and pass the ordinance, that's his right, you don't have to take my advice.
No, I understand that.
So I just want to make it clear.
But what we're asking you is just to sit down and review it with him if you can vocal. vocal.
Council President, I will do that for you, for the rest of the council.
Mr. President, so regardless of that meeting, we still would need a special meeting to rescind a vote to have a special election.
Correct.
Okay.
And so how would we set that up?
Maybe, I heard maybe. I heard, I don't know what the timing is.
Well, at some point, you have to rescind it, right? Until you rescind it, it's valid.
That's what I mean, a special meeting, right? I mean, it could be the next regular meeting in October.
No, the seventeenth is the, and that's too late.
How do we know that's too late? I don't. I was told by canvassing today that once it goes forward. Once canvassing meets and they certify it, then.
All right, well.
I can check that out, too. I don't know.
Yeah, that's, and we're not going to resolve that tonight as far as what, but if you can get the answer.
I will try to get, I will get the answer.
Okay. Will that be it, Mr. Fertato? Thank you, sir. All right, moving right along. We're still on the reports, but before we do, we're going to need to make a motion to extend another fifteen minutes. So move, and hopefully we can do this within the next few minutes. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye and aye oppose. No one opposes, so we're going to proceed right along. We're still on the new businesses, excuse me, new business, reports of other city officials, city solicitor, Mayor J., Michael J. Marcello.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the city council, as you know, the city council, may have the claims committee prior to this meeting at six-thirty. They approved the following surcharge abatements in the following amounts and unanimous votes. Michael Burns, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six, excuse me, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty cents. Claim of Daniel Clayman, an amount of two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Claim of Gary Turner, an amount of two oh seven, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents. And Ronald War, War, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents. As I stated, these were all surorabatements and complied with the ordinance in the move passage unanimously. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. City Solicitor. Next item, please.
Next item is resolutions for vote. Resolution requesting that the Rhode Island congressional delegation assistant directing the removal of abandoned piers in the India Point Railroad Bridge within the East Providence, Rhode Island, the, the East Providence, Rhode Island waterfront, sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, I will try to circumvent all of the reading. It's just something I, I did talk about extensively at the last meeting, and it only requires approval tonight, and it's just approval of send a letter asking for help. We may and may not get it. I would just say that I did go and attend the meeting of our waterfront commission and received unanimous support from them for this, unanimous enthusiastic support for this. Also, some members of the Chamber of Commerce that I had occasion to speak with. I, using the social media footprint that we, we exist in today, I put out a message just today with the pictures that they were showing earlier, they're not up now, but, and we showed them at the last meeting, too. And I received no fewer than sixty, six zero immediate responses with comments from residents in strong support of this. I've also talked to Senator Whitehouse's office, who had previously attempted to do this, and then it broke down. So I, I'm just asking that we can forward this request along to the congressional delegation and without reading it all, what I put in the, in this resolution, it mentions all of the good things that our waterfront has brought us, and they're in front of you, from Kettle Point to Eaton Corporation and all of the things, Live Nation, that we've done. I won't even attempt to read those. We're basically saying that whereas the potential for waterfront development in East Providence is very beneficial to the Rhode Island economy and East Providence's economy in terms of employment, tax growth, et cetera, talk about, I don't think we have to convince people about the importance of our water, waterfront and mixed-use development. The decaying old piers and the abandoned and rusting India Point Railroad Bridge, which has already been identified by the Coast Guard as a navigational hazard, remain a deterrent, obstruction, and eyesore to further development of the East Providence waterfront. And this was fully supported by the waterfront commission. I've given the history of here, how it was built in the eighteen hundreds. Half of it has already been removed. It's not a historical thing that people can come and sit and have a picnic and enjoy. I mean, it's, Providence got rid of their half, and look what happened to India Point Park, the beautiful park. We have more potential. We face the West. We have sunsets. We have, we can do a heck of a lot more. We can bring boating in. You see how, right there, that picture, that bridge is practically touching the deck of the, of our business there. So I'm asking that, and I'll put this, I guess, in a form of a motion, that now therefore be resolved with the city council, the city of East Providence, with unanimous support of the East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Commission, hereby supports the demolition and removal of these navigational hazards, respectfully requests the involvement of our congressional delegation. And it goes on to say if we could send copies of this to all of these offices, our local representatives and senators, of course, the mayor who's on board with this and is enthusiastic about it. I talked with Senator Whitehouse's office again, and they said, just get this to us, and, you know, we'll, we'll run with it. So it isn't, anything that we're going to have to fund, you know, down the line, someone says, well, East Providence has to kick in something, well, we probably won't do it. But I'd at least like support to send this in as a request and see where it goes.
I'll take that as a form.
Form of a motion.
Form of a motion.
Second.
And we have a second vote. Real call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please. Thank you.
Next item, resolution to authorize the council president to approve the city clerk's requested, request of earn time off.
I'll just table that for the next council meeting.
Okay. The only other item is adjournment for vote.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Third. Fourth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, you want to oppose? Be here a little later if you like. I just have it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.[1733.38]